Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the January 19, 2017.
Commission hearing. Would you please join me in the flag salute? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, I caution you to turn off your cellphones and be mindful that there are parking restrictions outside. Somewhere around 10 o'clock, I suppose, if we're still here, and I assume we will be, we'll take a short break to allow people to move cars if they have to. If you haven't already turned in a speaker card and you intend to speak, please do so. Madam Clerk, will you take the roll?
Commissioner Callie?
Here.
Commissioner O'Doucas?
Here.
Chair Onstott?
Here.
Commissioner Kessley?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Now is the time set aside for comments for matters not on the agenda. Does anybody wish to speak? I have no speaker cards in that regard. Okay, we'll move on then. First item is the minutes of the last meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move approval of the January 12, 2017 minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Minutes are approved. The first and only item for business is PL 15-0118. It's Mr. Mazler, CUP for Rock Quarry in the north of the city of Ojai. The matter comes before us. Mr. Mazler has requested an extension of the term. The matter was heard as a minor modification by the planning director, which was approved. That matter was appealed to this commission, which is why we're here today. Does that correctly sum up the status procedure?
That's correct, Chair Onstott.
Can we proceed with the staff report, please?
Okay, I hope it's coming up on the screen shortly. And that looks vaguely familiar. First, before I get started, just to set some context. Every mine operation in the state of California needs three things to operate. One is a local permit to mine, a conditional use permit, in this case for the county of Ventura, an approved reclamation plan, which is both a state and county document, and an adequate financial assurance to assure that the site can be reclaimed. The latter two items are not before your commission today. The reclamation plan is a document that does not have an expiration date. It is not proposed to change, and it's already been approved by the county and the state. The financial assurance has already been determined to be adequate by the county and the state. So the only thing before you today is a modification of the conditional use permit to extend the permit term. With that, I'll begin. Again, this is the Mazler Rock, Ojai Quarry. The case number is PL 150118. As you may know, the quarry is up Highway 33 near Matilha Lake, north of the city of Ojai. This is an aerial photograph, which shows the zoning and the project site outlined in yellow. And perhaps I have suffered some technological difficulties. There we go. This is a close-up and shows you the disturbed area of the mine and the boundaries of the properties that are involved with the project. On your left is Maricopa Highway or State Highway 33. This is a diagram that shows you where the approved reclamation plans apply. The area to the left, or the upper-left, larger area, is the 1995 reclamation plan that was approved for this facility. And then the area to the right are areas that were added to the reclamation plan in 2014 with the Reclamation Plan Compliance Amendment, ultimately approved by the Board of Supervisors. So that is not proposed to change, the terms of the reclamation plan. Just a couple of years ago, Mr. Mazler, the operator of the quarry, was in some litigation with Santa Barbara Channel Keepers, and they came to agreement, and he modified his permit to include various erosion control measures and limitations on quarry operations into his permit. So that was done, and that, in his case, ended the litigation and modified the project to have additional erosion control measures that were not actually required by the county, but were put in through private agreement, and he put it into his CUP. Among that agreement, or one of the components of that agreement, was that he would limit his mining to a smaller area than was allowed by the county. So when he modified his permit, right now, this is the limit of mining, which is a subset of the entire area that was approved by the county. With this change in his CUP, of course, the parts that are outside of that area are now subject to reclamation, other than the parts that are needed for access. So here's a history of the quarry. It started as the Mariposa Placer Camp claim in 1939. Schmidt acquired it in 1948. In 1976, the first CUP was granted and a reclamation plan approved by the Planning Commission for a 20-year period. At that time, there was an EIR certified in 1976. In 1981, there was a modification granting to extend the permit term. The 1976 EIR was used for that same process and found to be adequate. In 1995, the CUP 3489-2 was granted for another 20 years, and a revised reclamation plan was approved. That is the one I just showed you. And a new EIR was certified, which we'll refer to as the 1995 EIR. So recent permit history. We have the RPCA approved in 2012, and that was approved by the planning director, subsequently appealed and approved by the Planning Commission, and then subsequently appealed and approved by the Board of Supervisors. And the environmental document at that time was an addendum to the 1995 EIR. In December 2014, a permit adjustment was granted that incorporated all the erosion control measures that the operator agreed to with Santa Barbara Channel Keepers. And of course, the current process that we're getting there right now was a 2015 modification application, which is now before your commission on appeal. Here's just the summary of the project. The hours of operation are 7:00 to 7:00. The days of operation are Monday through Friday. Truck trips, 20 truckloads per day. That's 40 one-way trips. The mined lands are eight acres, but they're required to reclaim 17 acres. So the actual area that's going to be allowed to be excavated is smaller than the total that was originally approved by the county. The permit term is proposed to be 30 more years, ending in 2046. The key issues: truck traffic. The number of truck trips per day is not proposed to change. That's addressed in the SEQA documents, of course. In fact, that truck trip limit is the same as it was in 1976. So it hasn't changed for 40 years. The biological resources. That's been addressed in the previous SEQA documents. There's no change in circumstance. So the previous addendums and environmental documents that address these issues are still valid. Visual resources, and we'll talk more about that later. That's also addressed in the SEQA documents. And of course, air quality is addressed. The planning director held a hearing on December 5. One public commenter appeared. The CUP was granted on December 6, 2016. An appeal was filed on December 14. The grounds of appeal, and I won't read these to you. They're in your staff report. They recommend in the ground of appeal that the quarry be not allowed to open until 8:00, so that truck drivers don't go past the high school when the high school's going into session at 7:30, you know, between the hour of 7:00 and 8:00. And of course, their grounds of appeal, they cite inexperience in newly licensed drivers as among their encarting parents, and they shouldn't have to compete for the same road in front of Nordoff High School. Well, the road in front of Nordoff High School, of course, is the state highway. And I just have some shots showing you what we're talking about here. In the upper part of the photograph is Nordoff High School. You can see the football stadium and the various administrative and classroom buildings. There is State Highway 33. And as you can see, it's a fully-developed four-lane boulevard with sidewalks and traffic control and dedicated left-hand turn pockets. There is only one left-hand turn allowed into the high school, and that's at Church Street on the left-hand side. There is no left-hand turn into the high school allowed at Perry Street. And there's no left-hand turns allowed coming out of the high school during school hours. So that's the current traffic situation there. And I have a few more pictures. Again, here's Church Street and Perry Street right across from the high school and the parking lot. This is Church Street, just a little bit closer up. And you can see there's dedicated left-hand turn lanes. And on the top of the photograph, that's the left-hand turn, the one left-hand turn you can make going into the high school. And that's Church Street. This is a view looking southbound or eastbound toward the highway intersection. The high school is in the far ground there. And on the approach to the high school, you have, you know, school lighted, school speed limit signs that you can barely see in this photograph, but they have flashing yellow lights on either side of this sign, on either side of the high school. And of course, a nice taste sign that says "Traffic fines doubled" in the school zone. And so, and you can see behind the trees there is the high school buildings, and the parking lot is just to the right. This is the exit out of the parking lot at Church Street, out of the high school parking lot, and the traffic control they have there. This is a view looking the other direction. I'm standing at the Ojai Valley Hospital, and looking to the left, sort of catty corner across the street is the edge of the high school. And this is just a view looking at the northbound side of Highway 33. This is the intersection of Perry Street. People traveling southbound on the highway can turn left into Perry Street, but they cannot turn left into the high school at this location. So there is no left turn here into the high school. And it's another view of Perry Street intersection. Again, another view of Church Street, which is the one left-hand turn. And as you can see, there's no sight distance problem. You can see for thousands of feet from this spot. Again, Church Street, which is the key left-hand turn into the high school. Well, the original condition in the permit, that is the subject of the appeal, limited traffic between 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. And the request is to limit traffic from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. So what is being requested by the appellant is different than what was in the original permit. They're not asking for the original permit condition to be continued. They're asking for a new condition that limits traffic from 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. Well, the quarry has always had the ability to run traffic from 7:00 to 8:00 a.m., so that's never been restricted. So, and as we said, and the highway there is a fully-developed four-lane boulevard. In fact, it's the widest road in the Ojai Valley. And so we have a 40-year record of trucks using that highway during that hour. And the record is actually very clear. Based on Caltrans and CHP data, in the last 11 years, there have been 25 accidents near Nordoff High School during all days and hours. Now, in the 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. hour, which is the hour of interest, there's been an estimated 1.1 million vehicles pass Nordoff High School in that hour on school days. And one accident occurred during that hour. That accident involved a 49-year-old making a U-turn at Valerio Street and sideswiping a 29-year-old. So there's actually been no teenager accident in the 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. hour in the last 11 years, despite 1 million vehicles passing the high school. So, you know, for the first time in my career, I can say that the odds of getting into an accident are 1 in a million at this spot. And even more importantly, the last accident involving a teenage driver in the vicinity, regardless of time, was 2008. So it's been eight years, approaching nine, since the last accident involving a teenager near the high school. And so along with that is that we have no record of accidents involving a mining truck from 2006 to 2016. In fact, we have no evidence that there has ever been an accident involving a mining truck, except one reference in the 1976 EIR, that a mining truck from Ojai Quarry got in an accident. However, the accident occurred at the Highway 33, Highway 101 Transition Road down in Ventura. It did not occur even in the Ojai Valley. So we have no record of an accident anywhere near Nordoff High School in the 40 years that this facility's been operating with their 20 truckload today. And then there's sort of some operational factors. There's a maximum of three loaded trucks in the 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. hour, because the quarry is limited by how fast they can load a truck. Takes 15 minutes to load a truck, so he can only get three out within that hour to even go down the highway during that hour. So, and of course, we have no evidence that suggests that the truck drivers are unsafe drivers themselves and need to have their activities restricted, which is sort of part of the concept that somehow people driving these trucks, which are highly regulated, and the drivers have higher level of licenses, are somehow unsafe, and they're the ones who should be off the highway, rather than the teenage drivers, who I would have to congratulate for not being involved in an accident for eight years. So somebody's doing something right at Nordoff High School. So the staff recommendation is that the grounds of appeal are without merit. And we recommend that you deny the appeal and grant the requested CUP. Now, you've received some correspondence, and these are labeled in your packet, current packet exhibits. Well, there's Exhibit 5, which is in your staff report, which is an email from Joseph Westbury. He's the chairman of the Ojai MAC. And of course, he was part of the majority of the Ojai MAC that voted to support the project when it was reviewed by that body, and disagrees with the appeal and recommends that you approve the project. There's also a letter from Tri-County Transportation, which is the primary truck company that hauls material from that quarry, and essentially saying, "We haven't had any accidents, and we don't know what you're talking about." And then there's, Item C is a letter dated yesterday from Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas. And they request additional environmental review because of the deletion of the 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. restriction. And then they argue that there's some inconsistency with the reclamation plan. Well, the second one's easy. We're not dealing with the reclamation plan today. That's not before your commission, and no changes are proposed in an approved plan. Now, the additional environmental review. Well, why and where did the truck restriction on Highway 33 come from? It's not from the environmental documents, because the '75 EIR found that the impacts on traffic were less than significant. And there was no mitigation measure in that original document. The 1995 EIR merely said, well, they recognized that there's this condition that was put on the project to restrict traffic in the 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. hour, but there's no analysis or any change in impact level based on that second document. So we have two ARs, neither of which found that there was a significant impact on traffic. The condition came from the Planning Commission hearing. It was imposed at the hearing, but it wasn't part of the environmental document and the environmental findings that were made for the project. So there's no basis to, you know, do a subsequent EIR, because there was no impact found for traffic. It was strictly a condition that was placed by the decision-makers as part of their deliberations at the 1976 hearing. Now, there, another letter we had. We have a PowerPoint submitted by Kimberly Rivers and Dr. Bayless. And I guess that'll be presented to you later. I don't have to comment on that. That will be shown. And then we have a 11817 letter from the Los Padres Forest Watch. Well, in there, they say that, well, there's visual impacts, and you need to do some additional environmental review for visual impacts. Well, the county, this is becoming a theme. If you have one EIR, you need two. If you have two ARs, you need three. And so visual impacts were assessed. They were determined to be significant and unavoidable. The county decision-makers adopted a statement of overriding considerations, recognizing that these visual impacts are significant and unavoidable. The SEQA process on visual impacts is over. We can't go any further than admitting that it's significant and unavoidable and adopting a statement of overriding considerations. And nothing that's happening here with this current project exacerbates any visual impact that is out there at the quarry. In fact, the recent changes made by the operator, you know, in cooperation with Channel Keepers, has reduced the footprint of mining out there. So if anything, visual impacts have gone down. But that issue is just completely over legally. And Mr. Barnes can comment that if he wishes. And then we received at 10 o'clock last night an email from John Brooks making various observations about traffic. He didn't report an accident. He just reported that someone used their brakes. And so I'm not sure of the meaning of that. I'll just leave it to your commission to judge what that means. With that, I'm available for any questions. Oh, one other thing. An issue that's come up is what is the county's authority to regulate traffic on the state highway? Okay? Well, Vehicle Code Section 21 says that the highway rules that are specified in the Vehicle Code are uniform throughout the state, and no city or county can change the rules. And they can't do it without express authorization by the code. That is, an action by the legislature. Now, that being said, what it means is that, as a land use matter, the county can decide when the gate opens and when the gate closes at the mining facility. But once the transport truck, the licensed driver, and the licensed vehicle is out on the state highway, we can't tell them where to go or how to behave. They transfer into the jurisdiction of the CHP and Caltrans. Now, in terms of impact review of a project, SEQA is also a state law. If we identified a significant impact because of this project that occurred somewhere along the state highway, we could mitigate that impact. But we'd have to have substantial evidence in accordance with Section 15064-F5 of SEQA to show why there would be a significant impact there. But as a general rule, just because we might like to, we can't restrict a citizen's right to use the public highway without having some direct evidence and substantial evidence that there's a problem. In this case, the accident record is clear. There's only one truck accident in the record that we're aware of that occurred along Valerio Street, where a truck, not a mining truck, did a left turn and sideswiped somebody at Valerio Street about 100 feet east of the high school. That's the only truck accident in the record. Well, none of the mining trucks would be down on Valerio Street turning onto the highway. They'd only be through traffic on the highway. So this clearly wasn't a mining truck, and it was either related to the residential use that's down that street, or on one side of the street is the edge of the shopping center. So it was either related to a delivery to the shopping center or to some residential use. So we have actually no evidence whatsoever that a truck from Ojai Quarry has been involved in an accident in this area. And so we don't have any basis to continue that condition. And I point out, when we do a time extension or an extension of the effective period of a permit, we don't just carry through the conditions. We look at them and see what makes sense and whether they meet current standards and things like that. And this condition just simply didn't make sense. It included things where people had, where the mine operator and his drivers had to report to the police that they were about to engage in a legal activity. Not an illegal activity, but a legal activity. And so we didn't see, understand the nexus for that. And so that's why that condition was eliminated. We just have no evidence that there's a problem here. The evaluation of the geometry and adequacy of the road was reviewed by the County Transportation Department. Those are our subject matter experts. There's really nothing to see here. It is a fully-developed four-lane highway, actually six lanes if they wanted to put another lane in, with turn pockets and pedestrian controls, and there's just, and plenty of sight distance. There's just no physical reason why this part of the state highway can't be used. And I would point out that the, one of the arguments in the Sea Frog letter is that, well, the fact there's been no accidents is the reason why you should keep the condition. The condition is working. Well, that's really kind of a weird statement, given that the quarry traffic is less than 1% of the traffic. And it's also a minority of the truck traffic on the highway. So how does that tiny minority, not being there for an hour from 8:00 to 9:00, have anything to do with the accident rate? It's just completely irrelevant. So I'm available for your questions.
Before we take questions, it's time for disclosures. At this time, I'd like to ask each planning commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. Madam Clerk, would you call the commissioners?
Commissioner Callie?
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner O'Doucas?
I visited the site and drove onto the lower portion of the mine and saw that it was neat as a pin. Drove by the high school and observed that there are indeed trucks on the highway and didn't observe any difficulty or any dangers as a result of those trucks being on the driveway, they were on the highway. They were not mining trucks, because the mine wasn't in operation. And that is all.
Commissioner Kessley?
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
I've driven by Nordoff High School a number of times. After receiving one of the documents yesterday, I pulled up the mine site on Google Earth to see what it looked like visually to get a much clearer picture of what exactly was going on there. And beyond that, I would have to, well, I have past experience involving traffic, et cetera, et cetera.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. I have been reminded by my fearless leader that I should put on the record that I'm very familiar with mining operations, because I served for eight years as a member, vice-chair, and acting chairman of the State Mining and Geology Board. And I'm a registered geologist, certified engineering geologist, and certified hydrogeologist, licensed by the state of California.
I've also been at this for 28 years, and there's not much left.
Thank you, sir.
Chair Onstock?
I have no disclosure. Well, the only, the history I have on previous proceedings here is the only thing I would disclose. Those are all matters of public record. Other than that, no disclosures.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have questions at this point in time?
I'm just curious. Have you ever received a citation, traffic citation?
Pardon me?
Have you ever received a traffic citation?
You know, I've never confessed in a public hearing, but yes, I have.
Have you ever driven down the road and seen a patrol car stopped as you approached? And did you in fact slow down when you saw it?
Well, that was a nasty trick that was done in Nevada where they have an empty patrol car at various places on the highway. Yes, I do slow down when I see.
It's a natural reflex.
That's a natural reflex, and I understand, I guess in the context of your question, Commissioner Rodriguez, I understand that the Ojai Police Department has a vehicle there quite often at the high school. So...
I'm just trying to back into the reason for no accidents there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Nora.
Thank you for your presentation. Could you clarify for me? I've heard the hours seven to eight and eight to nine, and I'm getting them transposed in my head. Could you just state from the beginning to the end the limitations on traffic and the lack of limitations on those time periods? And which are which? Because I've got them all snarled in my head now.
Well, to be very clear, the hour from eight to nine is after the hour from seven to eight.
Thank you.
The original permit condition that came out of a planning commission hearing 40 years ago limited traffic from eight to nine. And presumably, that was when Nordhoff High School began their session, was sometime between eight and nine. So the idea was to have the trucks avoid that hour. But they were still authorized to go from seven to eight, and they've been authorized to go from seven to eight for that entire 40-year period.
Okay.
And now the high school, and for many years, they opened it in 7:30, or the first bell's at 7:40. So people are arriving right in the middle of the seven to eight AM hour. Well, the mine conditions didn't change, and didn't change to restrict them seven to eight. So right now, there's no restriction from seven to eight. And we don't see any reason to have a restriction from eight to nine. And because you have at least an 11-year, likely a 40-year record of no accidents from seven to eight, and by eight o'clock, everybody's in class, teachers, and everybody else. So there just is no reason to continue this condition when it was first done or now.
I see.
And can we even make that type of stipulation, given the state rules for a state highway? It seems to me that we have to change the hours of operation for the mine to put any type of restriction on the use of that highway.
Chair Onstock, Commissioner Callie, you are correct in your thinking. We cannot put a condition together that says this segment of the state highway should be avoided by these certain citizens. What you have the authority to do is change the hours of operation of the mine and really the opening and closing times of the gate at the mine. We're not regulating the highway, we're regulating the mine. So if you feel that you need to adjust the hours of operation of the mine, that's within your discretion. But it's not that you can decide that this legal use on the highway shouldn't be there. And of course, in our review of the project, we see no reason to do that. I mean, literally, no reason, zero reason, to have that kind of a restriction.
Anyone else?
I have one more question.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Can you explain why we're, the CUP is for 20, the request is for 30 years instead of 20 years, which it has been in the past, it's been 20 years at a time?
Well, the applicant asked for 30 years. 30 years is a normal length of time for a mining project. We just approved two mining projects, Wayne J. and Grimes Rock, both for 30-year periods. So it didn't seem like it's a problem. Along with the fact, of course, this mine is the smallest mine in Ventura County. You know, in contrast, Semex has 1,000 trips a day. This mine has 20. So there's the universe of mining in the county. So, but the length of the permit term, and of course, that was one of the issues brought up by Mr. Kuiper in his letter. He suggested a lesser term for this permit. That's within your discretion.
Thank you. I just wasn't sure what the other mines, whether standard was 20 years, but you just explained that the other mining operations are for 30-year increments, so thank you.
Talking about trips, loads per day in the CUP, we talk about 20, which translates to 40 truck trips in and into and out of, 20 of which are loaded, obviously coming Part of the argument we heard had to do with, obviously, the restrictions on traffic. We also received a letter from Mr. Mosley, the applicant, talking about that specific issue and speaking to the fact that, as I interpreted, under the best of circumstances, you know, he might get, have four trucks rolling out of there during the day. And equated, you know, how that would have to work with a time restriction, getting loaded and getting one out before eight o'clock, or something to that effect, and then the others coming afterward, so that they didn't impact in that restricted time zone. Am I correct on that? You read the letter, I assume?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez, what the mine operator, who's here today, by the way, and he can explain his own letter. But what he's saying is that, and I believe him, it's a small mine. He's very limited into the equipment and the space he has in which to load vehicles. Takes him 15 minutes to load a vehicle. So just given the 15 minutes it takes to load a vehicle, the seven o'clock opening bell for him to have trucks come on site, and the 15 minutes it takes to drive from the quarry to the high school, simple math tells you you can only get three or four loaded trucks past the high school during the seven to eight o'clock hour. And they would be spaced out 15 minutes apart. So, you know, one truck every 15 minutes going through what may be a busy morning, but it's one truck every 15 minutes among all the other hundreds of vehicles. Now, according to Caltrans records, the peak hour traffic, that would be the peak hour, seven to eight AM in the morning, is between 550 and 1,300 trips on that segment of the highway. Well, just taking the minimum number, 550, he's 1% or less of the traffic on the highway, and it'd be one truck every 15 minutes. So how that one truck, you know, avoiding that one truck every 15 minutes would somehow make the highway now safe, and that's the reason why we haven't had any accidents, is just, you know, an absurd use of mathematics.
That's the best scenario. As it's reflected, that benefits the applicant, obviously. But the CUP talks about 20 loads or 40 truck trips up and down that highway, ingress and Why do we still have, if the mine doesn't have that type of capacity, why do we have 20 trips per day coming out, potentially coming out of there under a CUP? Why don't we have less?
Well, Commissioner Rodriguez, that's for the entire day. We're just talking about what, because the appeal was based upon trying to have the mine not have any trucks from seven to eight in the morning, one hour. So over the 12-hour operational day, they can do their 20 truck loads. But the most you can get in the morning hour is past the high school, is three or four. And so it's the entire day. Now, I'll point out that according to Caltrans records, I believe that the daily truck load on that section of the highway is 108. So of that 108 trucks, a maximum of 40 would be the ones from Ojai Quarry. So it's a subset of the truck traffic that's already there, and even that is a minor load compared to the remainder of the average daily trips on the highway.
So at capacity, he'd be running about 30, 35% of the truck traffic during the day?
That, according to the record, that's how they would account. About 35% of the truck traffic on that segment would be Ojai Quarry if they're operating at their maximum capacity.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further questions? Just for the record, what's the status of the CUP? Are there any outstanding violations?
No.
Okay. And I'm assuming then we have a reclamation plan that's in and approved, and we have the financial guarantees in place?
That's correct. Items two and three on our three-point list for mining are covered, and we're just here today for an extension of time.
Understand and appreciate we can't control what happens while they're on the highway, but you have indicated that we could control it somewhat by the hours of operation. It's my understanding, what you're telling me, is there is no reason to change the hours of operation. There are no facts or circumstances in the staff's mind that would require them to do that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Just as a general rule and a conditional use of it, county council, to impose a condition on a CUP that's not an abuse of discretion, don't we have to have some rational basis or some information necessary to impose that permit condition?
That's correct, yes. Rational basis is, I think that's a good term. There has to be, yeah, actual objective evidence supporting the condition.
Okay. Is it your testimony that according to staff, there's no rational basis for imposing the condition requested, changing the hours?
Commissioner Onstock and members of the commission, there's no basis that we can identify of any type to impose what the appellate is suggesting.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll open the public hearing now. Mr. Mosler, I'm assuming you have a presentation?
No.
Excuse me a minute, just for procedural purposes, I'm advised, what we have is an application for modification of a CUP, which was granted by minor modification, and that's been appealed. I've been informed by staff and county council that we treat this as an application for a CUP. It's a de novo hearing, and the appeal basically is objection to that application. So we're not going to change the procedural situation. Is that correct, staff? Are we gonna go through? Okay. Counsel?
That's correct. Either way, it would really be fine, but you're right, in my mind, it's a de novo hearing, and so the applicant is asking you for the permit. And so what the appeal did was kick the decision maker up from the planning director to your commission. And so, you know, both sides will have their say, but I think it's more appropriate to have the applicant go first.
Okay. Mr. Mosler, floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm back again. I believe this started back in 2007. It's been going on for a long time. I have abided by all the rules, regulations, everything that has been thrown in front of me. I've abided by it. I've adhered to it. I've done everything that I was either told or asked to do. Mr. Baca has presented a very good case of the facts. I don't think I really need to go into them anymore. The facts speak for themselves. Now, this is just, it has to come to an end at some point in time. Now, what I would like to do is be a little different and unorthodox in my feelings about this whole matter. I'd like to express my First Amendment rights. Michael Shapiro and his buddy Howard Shapiro, Howard Smith, started this back in '07, for whatever reason. But it's my perception, their reason was to cause me as much physical discomfort, aggravation, and you could get the dictionary out and come up with all kinds of words. Plus, the main one was financial ruin, that if they could take and drag me in front of this board...
Mr. Mosler, excuse me. I understand why you feel the way you do. I've been present at hearings, but it will do no good or no purpose to attack the people who have a legitimate right to appeal, and it will not sway this commission, I assure you. You don't need to do that. They'll have an opportunity to speak, and you'll have an opportunity to rebut. I would appreciate if you would stick to the facts of your operation and your position.
That's fine. I was going to have my speech or my say, but that's fine. You know, I think everything has been addressed. Again, I would like to just clarify my letter to the commission about best-case scenario on these trucks. If I have a job, I can bring in 20 trips a day. If I have a job that is in Oxnard or that's relatively close to where I can get each truck to make four trips in the day, that would mean I would have five, bring in total of five trucks to run four trips. That's 20 loads. The trucks are already at the quarry at seven o'clock. It takes 15 minutes to load each truck. Quarter after seven, the first truck would go down to the scales, and then it would take another 10, 15 minutes to get down past the high school. Second truck would go down to the scales at 7:30, and then it would be theoretically at school 20 till seven, 20 till eight. Third truck would get loaded at 7:45. It would get to the high school by 10 till eight. Fourth truck gets loaded at 8:00 AM. It would get to the high school at 10 after eight. That would be the best-case scenario I would have. If we had a longer haul, then there wouldn't be four rounds, four loads for each truck a day. It would go back to three loads. So, because the haul would be longer. Now, three versus four would not affect 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM. But that is the best-case scenario that I would have as far as the number of my trucks going in front of the high school during that period of time. Are there any questions on that? I'm done.
You'll have an opportunity to rebut later, so you're not done yet.
Thank you.
All right. I have no other cards for anyone in support. Is there anyone here in support besides Mr. Mosler? Okay. Now, people opposing, I have several cards here. Are you folks organized in any particular way that you want to go forward? All right, sir, please come up. State your name and address, please.
Yes, Chair Onstock. It's Michael Shapiro from Ojai. Thank you, and fellow commissioners as well.
Michael, what's your address?
Oh, sure. 1231 Fairview Court in Ojai.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. So I'm joined here, I just, I will be leading, I'm the lead appellate, but as we've done in the past, I'm representing the city of Ojai. I'm also representing the Ojai Unified School District.
Sure, there's a point of clarification.
Yes.
I know individuals signed as appellate. Are they in their individual capacity? Are they representing the city and the school district?
They will be, that's correct.
Well, are they representing themselves, or are they representing the city of Ojai and the school district?
Gee, I... School district, there you go. In Ojai.
Thank you. I wanted clarification, whether the entities themselves were taking a position or just individuals. Go ahead, sir.
And throughout the history, I don't want to comment on the unfortunate feelings that Mr. Mosler expressed, but there's never been any vendetta against Mr. Mosler. In fact, all of our work, all these years, in trying to keep the operation on the straight and narrow, were supported by the city of Ojai. All our legal fees were paid for by the city of Ojai, and, you know, that's all I'll say.
Thank you.
So I have, following me, I'm going to give a sort of a baseline overview of why we decided to file this appeal. I'll be supported by Mayor Pro-Tam Bill Wirick. I'm joined by Hank Baxter, the superintendent of education for the Ojai Unified School District, and as well as Greg Bayless, the principal of Nordhoff High School. A little background, and this is also stated in the 2012 County Planning Staff Report, regarding this prohibition that's been in place for some time now that permits gravel hauling transport trucks to enter the Ojai city limits no earlier than 9:00 AM. This condition has, it does exist, and has already existed now for some time. And as claimed by the planning staff, given that the CUP hasn't really been amended, the conditions must obviously still remain in effect. And in fact, it's our interpretation that it does. The Ojai city limits, by the way, there's a Welcome to Ojai City Limits sign just about a mile or so at the most before, as you're coming up Highway 150, before you get to the Ojai-Y intersection where the Von Shopping Mall is. That's the official entrance to the city limits of Ojai. It has been, also this planning staff's position, that the condition of when trucks could enter the city limits of Ojai somehow has stopped existing. And as a result of the recent administrative process that involved the preparation of this particular new CUP extension, that fact changed when the gravel hauling trucks may arrive at the quarry to this much earlier 7:00 AM. But the planning staff somehow, and for some reason, seemed to unilaterally just act to remove the earlier and longstanding condition without any debate, without any discussion. And if that's the case, such an action like that has significant environmental impact. And the impact, obviously, is the unnecessary endangerment of the safety and welfare of the lives of arriving students and faculty, carpooling parents, pedestrians and bicyclists, all arriving at the same time. all arriving at the same time for the start of the school day at Noradoff High School. So, no one can dispute the fact that the vast majority of arriving cars every day in the week, driving in both directions on Highway 33, most heading to the Noradoff High School parking lot during the weekdays, in the majority are, in fact, it was mentioned a little while ago, and I agree, being driven by inexperienced, relatively newly licensed teenage drivers, as well as a significant quantity of pedestrians, bicyclists, faculty, of course, and also carpooling parents. They're all arriving at a heavily concentrated peak traffic hour, a peak time of the day. They're all rushing to be on time for the start of classes when the final bell rings at 7:45. To have this daily, weekly ritual take place at the exact same time as even one behemoth gravel hauling truck, let alone several, or perhaps even a caravan or more, each sharing the same road, is in and of itself a potential environmental impact that must be dealt with by sequel law if you're going to revoke that time limit of when trucks can arrive past that spot. Let me just review for a second here. On August 11th, 2010, the Planning Division issued nine additional notices of violation to the quarry operator's trucks. And this is because trucks servicing the quarry, traveling along Highway 33 in front of Noradoff High School, had done so earlier than the permitted hours. So, the, the condition certainly was there, otherwise they wouldn't be guilty of receiving a notice of violation in the first place. And they were, they were, the enforcement of that condition of no trucks in the city limits before 9:00 was enforced, and nine violations were, citations were given. In other words, the planning staff concludes and then adjudicated appropriately that the trucks heading to the quarry had violated that condition that had been in place now for a long time. Nine, nine different notices. It's this condition that prohibits gravel trucks from arriving at the quarry prior to 9:00 that's restated and contained, by the way, in the 2012 reclamation plan. That's also remained enforced to this day. Perhaps county planning hasn't realized this, perhaps they neglected to review the 2012 rec plan. So, to refresh their memory and to confirm to you, fellow commissioners, the county planning division staff report associated with this new 30-year CUP extension on page two states, quote, "The current approved rec plan for the mining site is comprised of the 1995 rec plan augmented by the above referenced 2012 reclamation plan. No changes in the approved reclamation plan are required." In other words, no changing from the 9:00 a.m. to the 7:00 a.m. for when trucks can pass by the high school. The prohibition remains per the 2012 rec plan, and that rec plan doesn't change that prohibition. And again, please remember that the 2012 rec plan states, among other things, quote, "Loaded trucks are prohibited from driving through the city of Ojai between the hours of 1:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. on weekdays," though this is not applicable when Noradoff High School is not in session. Again, see Condition Number 40 of CUP 3489-2. So what we're requesting is simply that this new 30-year CUP extension simply conclude, include the conditions for when trucks have always been allowed to drive through Ojai and pass before Noradoff High School, and that it remains consistent with the prior CUP as well as the approved reclamation plan. And doing so will justify the county planning's continuing efforts to enforce that restriction as they've done in the past if there are violations. The point is, the county and the planning staff in the past has clearly found this nexus between public safety and the operation of the quarry, when it first imposed the original condition and restrictions of trucks traveling through Ojai. And in fact, this nexus still holds true today. Conditions in front of Noradoff Senior High School haven't changed. However, in the coming years, when the children, and this is important to consider, we're talking about, again, a 30-year CUP extension, correct? So, when the children of today's Gen Xers will soon be attaining high school age, in fact, enrollment at Noradoff High School is expected to spike dramatically. So if anything, the traffic conditions there will be even more challenged in the future, and that future is most certainly within the timeframe of the 30-year extension now being granted to the quarry. And by the way, in the event that someone in the planning staff suggests that, as it has been suggested, that accident rates in front of Noradoff High School have been minimal in recent years, and thank God that they have, why do you think that's possible? Why is, why is it possible that such a good statistic has, has been evidenced? Well, I say that the reason is the conditions restricting gravel trucks' traffic during peak student hours have been effective. They've worked. They've actually helped cut down on accidents, deaths, and so on and so forth. And, and so, we could say that the condition, in the wisdom of the planning staff earlier that was set, was, was accomplished its task. It was, it was a very good thing to put in. Remember, gravel hauling trucks have now been permitted to traverse the city prior to 9:00 a.m. now for many years, and the county has enforced that condition by issuing numerous citations for violation of saying. So, I know you appreciate that the county's policing power and sequel law are based on the precautionary principle. Our planning laws are designed to prevent dangerous conditions and environmental damages and not to solely react to them after the fact. The county doesn't need to wait until an accident occurs near or in front of Noradoff Senior High School involving either a high school student, drivers, pedestrians, bicyclists, parent carpoolers, or, or faculty, or anyone else for that matter, to impose, to impose any new restrictions, restricting travel to a particular time. And that's why they, they had the wisdom to, to insert this restriction some time ago. And again, they don't have to because, do any new one because this condition has already existed, and it's existed for some time. But this is something now that you're going to hear for the first time. There's something else I believe you, fellow commissioners, and the planning staff, as well as the quarry operator, are not aware of. There's a big, huge, significant change about to take place on the entire stretch of road that includes that portion of Highway 33 that runs right past Noradoff High School. The city of Ojai has applied for and will now be the recipient of a Safe Streets Federal Grant. We are actually getting bids for it right now. And working and coordinating with Caltrans, we will soon dramatically alter the section of Highway 33 that runs all the way from that Von, the Y, the Von's Y intersection all the way to the N, past Noradoff, to the El Roblar intersection. We are, and I, if I could ask, all right, here we go. So, this was something that was actually presented, it's not a secret, this was presented at a city council meeting in December at our Boyd Center because the crowd turnout was so large, we had to move from city hall to a larger capacity. And this basically is a report from our Greg Grant Public Works Director confirming that the grant proposal was accepted. And I want to just show you a little bit about how things will so dramatically change so that the essence of this is the space will be so much more reduced that the onus of safe streets becomes even more of a responsibility for all of us. City approved, going down to the final, I don't see where the, oh, here it is. Down here, the city council approved applying for transportation development grant. We got all of that, and it's all about, we're going to put in many Noradoff High School pedestrian crossing improvements. The plan currently under the Caltrans permit review and approval process, but it's anticipated we're going, two to three months. We're already getting bids for contractors to make this happen, but again, because pictures are worth a thousand words, literally. The highlights of the plan, Maricopa Highway, separate, we're going to have separate bike lanes. It was originally developed by Caltrans, remains their concept. The buffer from the Y to the high school is painted, buffer space between vehicle traffic and bike lanes from the high school. Ojai Avenue, we're going to have bike lanes added, bike lanes from the Y all the way to Gridley and everywhere else. High visibility pedestrian flashing lights, et cetera, et cetera. But again, if I could just go to the, this was hard to follow, what I'm going to go to, to give you a sense of what we're talking about. Yes, there's four lanes now. Those four lanes are going to be reduced to two. That will be the offshoot of it. And to give you a sense of what that will, here we go. So we have pedestrian and bikeways and pedestrian, both bike lanes and pedestrian lanes, lots of landscaping, and now two lanes with a, of traffic per se. So the choke point for traffic and for truck sharing with, you know, a huge concentration of newly arriving students, faculty, and parents will dramatically increase. That's the shopping mall. No, that's something else. So you can take that down now. So, it's important, again, to remind you that the quarry owner has in the past, this is really important, he has already agreed to the 2012 rec plan, as has been confirmed here. And that rec plan had the restriction that gravel trucks could not approach the city, enter the city limits of Ojai until 9:00 o'clock in the morning. So that's already been agreed to, and we seem to be relitigating that and, and after the fact, which I, I just don't understand. Considering that this longstanding condition has been in place, it's hard to grasp why the county keeps saying that it never existed. And initially, when we first saw the, the county staff report for this 30-year CUP extension, and we saw the 7:00 o'clock arrival time, we were scratching our heads, well, wait, how can a gravel truck arrive at the quarry at 7:00 a.m. when the restrictions have been clearly in place and included in the reclamation plan that trucks can't approach the city limits of Ojai until 9:00? It's not possible. So we're learning now, sort of by route, that, well, they just, they just got rid of that restriction, just got rid of it. So, the fact of the matter is, is that the county is not being asked to regulate traffic. The same rationale that had been used for this restriction of trucks not allowing to enter Ojai and city limits until 9:00 isn't playing. You are right, you are in a de facto way restricting that traffic by putting restrictions on when trucks could arrive at the quarry's operation. And that's the legal rationale for how they, they were doing this and enforcing this all these years. That hasn't changed. You still have the legal right to enforce conditions at the quarry, which in a de facto way will keep and calm traffic down as it goes through the city of Ojai at the appropriate time. So, that, that's pretty much what I wanted to share with you, but I have some more details that will be presented to you by first our Mayor Pro Tem, William Wirick, and after that, we will have our Superintendent of Public Education, Hank Bankser, followed by Principal of Noradoff, Mr. Dr. Bayless. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Stay right there, please.
I'm sorry, and, and thank you for, this time I'm not shedding tears. I mean, so, you know, in the past, I've been before you. It's great. Thank you.
Well, we have some questions.
Okay, sure.
I have a question for county council. We're dealing with the CUP. The reclamation plan is not in front of us. The argument that I hear being made is by deleting the traffic restriction, ingress/egress from the new CUP, my question is, are we amending the reclamation plan? Because it's included within the reclamation plan.
No, we're not. And I haven't, I'll have to admit, I haven't seen the, the language that Mr. Shapiro was, was quoting from the reclamation plan, but the purpose of a reclamation plan is not to impose operating standards on a mining operation. And so my sense is, and Mr. Baca and Ms. Prilhart could address this better than I could, but my sense is that the reclamation plan language that Mr. Shapiro was quoting was interpreting or trying to describe the actual permit conditions. But again, yeah, the reclamation plan is not before you, and, and the conditional use permit is. And so the commercial, the conditional use permit is what imposes the operational restrictions.
Chair Onstott, Commissioner Rodriguez, I'd just like to point out that the page 15 of 38 of the Reclamation Plan Compliance Amendment, the most recent reclamation plan approved by the Board of Supervisors, said that loaded trucks are prohibited from driving to the city of Ojai between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. on weekdays, not applicable when high school's not in session. That merely repeats the condition that is in the current permit that we're recommending to be deleted. So there is no 1:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. condition, so Mr. Shapiro has misquoted the Reclamation Plan Compliance Amendment. And county council is correct, the reclamation plan is not a permit. It's, it's not an operational document. It describes how the site is to be reclaimed at the end of mining. All operational conditions are in the conditional use permit. And, and again, the reclamation plan is not before your board today.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Shapiro?
No, there's one thing I forgot to mention. There's, and I've conferred with my colleagues, there's room for compromise here. You know, the school bell, the final bell for when kids and faculty are at work and behind their desks is at 8:45. So, I mean, 7:45, 7:45. So, instead of having this longstanding condition of not allowing trucks to enter the city limits before 9:00, my colleagues have suggested that they're willing to compromise and push that, to make that a little earlier, as long as the trucks are not interfering with arriving students who get into their seats by 7:45. So basically, 8:00 would probably be free and clear. So there, there's a willingness for that, and I just want you to know that.
Thank you. Hold tight, just a second.
Okay. Can I, if there's any other question, because you, you will have more questions.
I have, I have a question. I may want to follow up.
Okay.
The conditions that we're talking about were imposed decades ago, and the environmental documents that were utilized over the term had no investigation, no, did not deal with the issue of these hours at all, did they? Or traffic safety? I mean, I know they dealt with traffic safety, but as a rational basis for imposing them in the first place, there, I, I, what I read was, there's no substantive support in the, in the environmental documents for those conditions, let alone the fact that we couldn't legally do it.
Well, I, I want to, Chair Onstott, just make sure that we're setting the stage correctly for the, for the other speakers that are coming up. The mine has always been able to operate at 7:00 a.m. So if you look at Condition 19D, shipping of materials and products to and from site Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., returning of empty trucks, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., there is no truth to it, the trucks could not be there at 7:00 a.m. They could have always been loaded at 7:00 a.m., right? The, 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 the problem that we had in reviewing it is it had an eight to nine limitation. We called the school, asked for the school bell, the school bell was 7:32, 7:35, right? The trucks were already allowed and had been for 40 years to come during that time. So, it, you know, so that, by saying, Mr. Shapiro saying that no trucks were able to be anywhere before 9:00 a.m. is simply not true. The trucks were always able to be there at, between the hours of, of 7:00 and 8:00. The restriction was eight to nine. That restriction made no sense. I had several conversations with the city manager from the city of Ojai about this, about this specific condition. When Mr. Shapiro said it was without debate or discussion, that's not true. We, we had debate and discussion with the city. We had debate and discussion at the MAC meeting. We had debate and discussion at the planning director level hearing. These, you know, it, it's not that the condition was taken out without discussion, it was the relevance of the eight to nine condition and the school bell. And I would just offer with this that, you know, if you, if you go along this line of reasoning that, that we would have to stop two trucks in front of a school because of the school bell, you would have to follow the truck out to it passes Villanova, and what time does their school bell ring, to a private preschool, and what time do they come in, and what time do those harried parents come to school? It's not just one school, three trips. I mean, that logic would lead me to wonder if we can condition the Pepsi plant by saying no deliveries to Miners Oaks between these hours. You know, when you have to follow a state highway and, and look at every use that's going on during every hour, that would be untenable for us to, to be able to conduct land use in that way. So, I mean, I, I want to, to offer the, because I, I want to stop the discussion on 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., they were always allowed to operate. I, I do recall that this mining operator had violations during that time, in one of which we absolutely, I believe that we processed a permit adjustment because one of the complaints that came in, he was able to open at 7:00, and a complaint came in at 7:55, or at 6:55, at 6:55, he opened the gate, the operator himself, right? That was because the, the condition wasn't so clear to That was because the condition wasn't so clear to say the operator couldn't come in. So we did a permit adjustment to say, all right, let's stop the nonsense of that. The operator is allowed to show up at a site at 6:30 in the morning. But we did issue a violation because a complaint came in, but that's the way we resolved it. So I'm not saying Mr. Mosser was without fault during those years, but I would say in these last five, six, seven years, he's done, as he said, everything that we have asked him to do, both the county and the state, who also regulates this mining operation.
May I comment just?
Sure, go ahead.
Just to clear, in case there's a confusion here, and there always has been, there's a difference between when Mr. Mosser's operation could allow workers, trucks, employees, and the like to arrive, that's always been at seven. That's true. There was no restriction at all. The restriction that I refer to, that's in writing, that's reconfirmed in the rec plan, was only about the gravel hauling transports. Those are the only restrictions that we're talking about, and that's the only restriction that is the basis of our appeal. Not when Mr. Mosser, his workforce, any employee for that matter, pickup trucks, whatever the like, they could all arrive at the quarry, open up the gate at seven in the morning. We've never objected to that. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay. I have further questions. Mr. Shapiro has posed radical changes are going to take place in Highway 33 in the immediate area. That's prospective in nature. What, if any, probative value should we address at this proceeding? I don't know when that will happen. I don't know if it'll happen. I don't know if it'll happen under the circumstances with the physical improvements and limitations. It seems to me, I need to know as a trier, in fact, what basis, what authority I give that at all. It seems to me I can't give it any.
So Chair Onstot, I would say to that, that, you know, it is speculative. We don't know that. And several times we've sent this project to the city, the city has never responded back in writing on this project in any way, alerting us to that. And I would say regardless of that, it would still be a state highway in a two-lane highway or a four-lane highway when we're talking about three truck trips. And that's really what this hearing is about, three truck trips. I would say, you would, there's no substantial evidence that would be presented, that I have heard yet today, or that's a matter of the record, the entire Caltrans and state highway accident records, that we would say, a two-lane highway or a four-lane highway, that we would control these three particular trips from this one activity unless we were set to do that along this state highway for all sorts of uses that we would be looking at, right? There hasn't been any evidence that says a truck is more unsafe than a car, or two lanes is more unsafe than four lanes. So even if the road was to be reduced, we're still talking about three trips. And I think three trips on a two-lane highway is still.
What recourse, if any, would they have during this planning process with the state of California on the roadway? I mean, I'm assuming they would have input, and have input on the improvements there too, that could affect us, or could affect the issue. But that's all perspective, isn't it?
Chairman Onstot, we have, and I didn't bring it up because I didn't think it was that relevant, we have the staff report for the Ojai City Council for the meeting dated December 13, 2016. And what they talk about is Nordoff High School pedestrian crossing improvements, where they're going to have flashing lights on the pavement, like we have in front of the Ventura County Medical Center. And you have personnel activated flashing lights to assist pedestrians from getting across the street. So it's an additional safety improvement, which, of course, it's already a safe and completely meeting standard situation, and it's being made even better by the city of Ojai. I don't have anything in here which says that it's been approved, that they're going to go to the complete streets master plan and cut the street down, the state highway down to two lanes. That would be a subject of public review and comment through Caltrans. So the process isn't completed yet. There isn't a project. But as, again, what we're talking about is, there's, in that peak hour, there's between 550 and 1,300 trips. And the Ojai quarry contributes three. And so there's just no connection between those three and any safety issue that's going to happen at the high school. I also point out that some of the information shows things crowded at the high school in the morning. The road is crowded. When the road's crowded, people are moving slower. The chances for a serious accident when you're going 15 miles an hour is much less than it is when you're going faster. And then, of course, it starts with using the term behemoth for a gravel mining truck. That imparts a certain level of evilness. Well, they're not evil. They're trucks operated by professional drivers that have to meet certain standards, and trucks that have to be maintained on a regular schedule according to the CHP. So they're not evil, and they're not behemoths. They're just transport vehicles. And in fact, they're very similar in size to a school bus. And so, and they're not being restricted. So let's just be clear, there is no restriction on trucks entering the city of Ojai until nine o'clock. They were always allowed from seven to eight. And so it doesn't help the public process to have false information handed to your commission.
Thank you. Nora, did you have a question?
I wouldn't direct this to you. I'm directing this question to County Council regarding this new information about the proposed or the plan in the future for these improvements in front of Ojai. What does that do in, how is the, what's before us, how does that fit into whatever secret review would have to be done?
My understanding is that the traffic project, I'll call it, hasn't been approved yet, and it's still, it sounds like it's still conceptual. And I guess the analogy I would use is for, in SEQA, when you're looking at cumulative impacts, the, when the lead agency, that is the agency that's doing the SEQA review, is gathering information on other projects, they have to look at projects that have been approved as of the date the SEQA project for the subject project starts. And so the reason for that is you don't want the decision makers to be looking at speculative projects that might not happen, that are just, you know, far out in the pipeline. And so that's the closest analogy I could come to here, and it sounds like this project hasn't been approved yet, and it hasn't been greenlighted, and it wasn't greenlighted as of the date the planning division here started its review of the CUP.
Which was a number of years ago, and now, all of that review is like a snapshot in time of the Ojai quarry.
Exactly. And that's, I mean, that's the best you can do under SEQA. SEQA is, you can't have a rolling, ongoing review, otherwise there would never be a final decision on a project under SEQA.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Shapiro? Mr. Shapiro, would you confer with your group? You or your group, probably you will have an opportunity for rebuttal, but I will not extend that to the entire group of speakers. So would you work that out amongst yourselves?
Yes, thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'd like to introduce Mayor Pro Tem, William Wyrek.
Thank you. Step up, sir. Name and address, please.
Bill Wyrek, 107 East Elisa Street in the city of Ojai.
Go ahead, sir.
And Chair members of the commission. My focus on this issue really started by attending the MAC meeting. And I can testify that at that meeting, I listened to the staff report, state specifically that this was a minor modification involving term only and nothing else. I heard those words directly from staff at the MAC meeting. And that got my attention because I was familiar with the existing CUP, and in fact, raised questions at the MAC meeting about that. And it was reiterated by the staff person, neither of which is in attendance here, that was at the MAC meeting, saying, no, there's no change, only the term. And so, again, that got my attention because I was somewhat familiar with the CUP on this project. And so I began to look at the source documents with respect to that assertion, and then I subsequently also looked at the website and the staff report for the minor modification hearing, administrative hearing, also stated, no change except term. And so it was very interesting to hear Mr. Bakka say that, while they had decided that they would not continue certain conditions, basically conceding that the representation to the MAC meeting and the description in the staff report was not exactly accurate in terms of errors of omission. I looked at first the already referenced reclamation plan, which cites CUP 3489-2, and of course includes, and that was at the end of December 14, as being still in place. And of course, states in 3489-2, 1995 revision, states the Condition 40, which I'll just summarize for the record, is talking about a number of fairly restricted conditions that had been in place for decades, and was obviously part of the original rationale by your predecessors when this was originally permitted and then revised in 1995, about notifying the police department at least 24 hours in advance when trucks are scheduled to be routed through the city, that the permitting should also enter into a contract with each truck driver who hauls equipment and material as part of the operation, and that the contract should require the following. Truckers should use Highway 33 exclusively, the only rated highway for trucks of this size through the city limits coming to and from the quarry. That loaded product truck shall be prohibited from driving to the city, off discussed here, between the hours of 8:00 and 9:00 a.m. on weekdays, and then the statement, this requirement, of course, does not apply on days when Nordoff High School is not in session, clearly establishing that the original permitting requirements thought about, we need to mitigate the issue of going by the high school when they're going into session at that early rush hour, which, of course, we've heard testimony to, has changed over the years. And then C, there'll be no parking of the trucks going to and from the quarry, that the permitting should keep written records, and so on and so forth. And so, again, I thought myself, what's happening here? And then we heard testimony about the consultation with the city manager. Well, the city manager was going to be here today. And I asked him, you know, went over what I was going to say, and he says, yeah, that's pretty much how I experienced it, and I want to correct the record with that consultation as well. When, what the city manager was telling me is that when he was, when he had this exchange with staff, staff told him, well, there's this condition that's been in place for many years about the operation from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and that's, we're not changing anything. And in fact, I have an email here from Kim Prilhart to the city manager, saying, here are the 1981 conditions. There are many other modifications after this, but the quarry always maintained the 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. condition, as well as the 20 load limitation that remains the same today. And he tells me what was represented to him was as represented to the MAC meeting. Nothing was changing except the term. When I shared with him, Condition 40, oh, and I think there was also an exchange of documents that he showed me where the condition about the hours of operation was highlighted from staff, but no citation of the condition later on, the Condition 40, which I just read in 3489-2, as confirmed by the reclamation plan at the end of 2014. And he just felt, I don't understand what's going on here. Why wasn't I, why wasn't this brought up in the discussion? In fact, some things are changing in terms of this CUP. And so what I'm basically coming from is that the reason the city is joining as a co-appellant here is we just feel uncomfortable with the representation, from what I can see and what we can see, and this has been discussed at the council level, in terms of the representations that were made to the MAC meeting and that were made at the administrative hearing, there were some definite errors of commission in terms of saying nothing was changing except term, when in fact, conditions beyond that were changing in terms of the CUP modification. And so I finally took one more step because I'd heard about this issue about the interpretation of the vehicle code and not allowing conditions in a CUP in terms of routes of travel through city limits. Talked to the city attorney about this, and he said he didn't understand. That was something that was not in his experience. He talked with his colleagues that represent other cities in Ventura County, in the law firm. They didn't know. They didn't understand. I talked to a friend of mine who was retired city attorney from the city of San Diego. He didn't understand. And so at my request, I relayed, I said, would Mr. McClary, the city manager, would you please ask the staff, the county staff, for the citations for that, to support that? Where is the court record? Where are the court judgments? Where is the case law to support that interpretation, either by county council or by staff? We have not gotten a response. I checked with him yesterday afternoon. He was very busy, couldn't be here. I told him I was going to say these things. He said, yeah, that represents my perspective. And so we're in a position of assertions being made about what can and cannot be in stipulations that either are inconsistent with some initial representations that we observed personally, or, number two, assertions about the inability to condition route of travel that we've asked for confirmation of in terms of case law or legal judgments, and not gotten any response in terms of validation. I want to just point out the fact that these conditions have been in place for decades. I assume the vehicle code has been in place for decades, and I don't believe there's been any challenge to this condition over those many decades in terms of limiting travel to Highway 33, which actually I think is also important, and I appreciate the opinion that this is a de novo hearing. Because frankly, the idea that you can't keep the quarry trucks, these large trucks, on a state highway, that in fact, we're going to drop that condition, and in a sense, say it's okay if you take a shortcut through a, excuse me, through a neighborhood, through a neighborhood, you know, of residential streets. The current condition says you can't do that. And that's apparently, according to Mr. Bakka's words, we don't see any basis for continuing that condition. So I just feel like, as you look at this thing in its entirety, don't understand why, and we, you know, it's just common sense rule, why you can't say that a quarry truck should stay on a state highway and not be allowed to cut through residential streets? That's being dropped, apparently. Why you can't just say, based on the original rationale for this CUP from the very beginning, we're going to mitigate the rush hour in front of the high school? It's actually a relaxation of the existing conditions that apparently are still in place, 3489-2, Condition 40. And that's just what I ask you to do and consider. Thank you.
Stay there, sir. I don't think it's your position that the county cannot modify a CUP, is it?
My, what I have asked is.
No, but what I'm simply stating is, an ongoing conditional use permit can be modified.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, okay. That one.
I didn't mean to in any way imply that.
No, no. I have a couple of things.
Yeah.
So what you're really saying right now is you have the equivalent of a due process argument, not being adequately informed of the changes and an opportunity to appear and contest them? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, for example, there was a letter written of support from the chair of the MAC.
No, but what I'm saying simply is.
And my position is simply is, simply is, as this is a de novo.
Right.
That you consider maintaining the original rationale adjusted to current conditions and prospective conditions on limiting the truck traffic in front of the high school during its rush hour, which has been in place from the very beginning.
No, I understand all that.
And number two, look carefully at the issue of why the requirement of keeping these trucks on a state highway is being dropped.
Okay. Back up a second. Now, what it seems to be saying to me is that you have been taken by surprise by this argument of deleting these offensive conditions.
I was at the MAC meeting after I looked at the source documents, yes.
Are you making that due process argument now that you would like an opportunity to rebut these issues?
I feel I'm somewhat doing that right now.
I know you are, but you haven't cited any authority to speak of.
I've cited the original conditional use permit, the one in effect now, 3489-2.
Well, I understand that.
Which includes Condition 40, and the staff report that said no changes other than a modification of term, and testimony that I heard directly from staff, saying at the MAC meeting, there was no change in the, except for the term, when in fact, there are, as admitted today by staff. admitted today by staff, more changes than that in the modification.
I am simply trying to inquire whether or not you are now making a due process argument that you have in fact been blindsided and not had a legitimate opportunity to do the research and make a legal presentation here.
I have to be honest with you. I feel I've, between the time that I became aware of this in this hearing, I have done some research. Yes, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Staff feel the need to say anything? Okay.
May I make us, just a correction for the record, sir?
Sure, go ahead.
With regard to the speculation on the complete streets project, I just reiterate when Mr. Shapiro testified, we have been awarded the grant. We are in the initial stages of bidding parts of that grant, particularly the pedestrian crossings, but the entire plan includes, the entire grant includes the planning, which is beyond speculation now in terms of the complete streets, reducing of the lanes and the bike paths for this stretch of Highway 33. We have had preliminary conversations and discussions with Caltrans that view it as part of their traffic calming strategies and consistent with that, obviously not approved yet, Caltrans doesn't move that fast. But they have gave, they have not rejected the rationale for the grant, and it's consistent with our general plan and what we believe is part of the Ojai area plan in terms of bike path enhancements and development. So it's a little beyond just pure speculation, all I want to say.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. It's 10:10, we're gonna take a 10-minute break. Anybody who feels the need to move a car... You ready? Lady and gentlemen, let's reconvene. Mr. Shapiro, could I have your next speaker up?
Yes, and following Dr. Banksor, his principal of Nordoff, he's still out there. He went to move his car as soon as we had a resource, so recess, so he's still out there somewhere.
He'll have an opportunity, don't worry.
Okay, all right, so I'd like to...
Don't worry.
I'd like to introduce Dr. Banksor, the superintendent of public education for the Ojai Unified School District.
Thank you. Your name and address, sir?
Okay, Hank Banksor. I live in Ventura, not far from here, 293 Roosevelt Avenue in Ventura. I'm gonna give you the shortest possible bio, here Mr. Baca talked about his three decades, and that's sort of my lifetime also in the public sector. It's my 31st year as a superintendent, eighth in Ojai, just came to California eight years ago, and so I've been in, on the east coast Midwest and out here, and I think it'd be fair to say that I've spent as much time as pretty much anybody sitting in your chairs or your chairs. So it's sort of fun to be on this side of the microphone, and I don't do it very often. I do it when I feel there's something I might be able to add. And it's important to me to separate what I see happening, or what I've seen happen over the last couple of hours, and what I want to comment on and what I won't comment on. What you'll learn is that between Greg and me, our comments will be short, they will not speak to what I would call the analytical part of what you're doing. And in that respect, I want to commend the eight of you and commend our two speakers on the homework that you've done. The one thing I would say, and I wonder if this isn't how some of you are feeling right now, you would wonder if in fact, some of the speakers are talking about the same documents. You know, because on the receiving end, it would be hard for me, for example, I would have asked the same question you did. Now, we're talking about 7 to 8, 8 to 9, pre-9, and which documents are, ascribe hours of operation, and then what is historical, what is in print, what was part of a conversation at a particular point in time at a particular public meeting. And I would just throw out to you that having been in your situations as the presenter more often than a board member or commissioner, it strikes me that as I look at the issue before you, that, and this is not gonna be rocket science, I'll just say to you, you sort of have three options, there probably are more, but three options. One is granting the change in the CUP. The second would be to support our appeal. And the third would be, and I'll just use the word defer, until some point in time where some of the, I'll just call it lack of clarity, that has emerged in the last couple of hours, could be cleared up. I think your question was spot on to Bill Wyrick, you know, exactly what is it that he's suggesting? Is it a due process issue, a matter of process, protocol, or is there something substantive there that might still be questionable in terms of what you're considering? So, that just, I wasn't really planning on saying that until I listened to the last couple of hours, but it seems to me that, having been around these boards for those three decades, I think any one of those three could be justified, but I didn't really think the third one might be until I heard the last two hours. What I'm not gonna do is to talk about the analytics, okay? Great research on the part of staff, great research on the part of Mr. Shapiro and Mr. Wyrick. They've said everything and more than I knew before I came and have learned in the last couple of hours. So I just want to talk about the other part of what I've seen over all these years when it comes to a challenge of a public sector, public sector board, or commissioner, set of commissioners. And that is that often you have analytics potentially conflicting with the personal side of the issue. And so I'm gonna just talk a little bit about the personal side, and then I'm gonna ask Greg to talk more about it, because he's lived it in terms of proximity far more than I have, and in a very poignant way. But I know when I try to present issues to the board, Board of Education, wherever it might have been, in whatever state, I try to delineate the difference between analytics and the personal emotional safety side of the equation, if in fact, there are two different ways of looking at it. And in my opinion, there are in this case. This is not a purely analytical issue, you know, how many trucks go between 7 and 8 and 8 to 9? It's not exactly only a personal issue either of safety, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk just a second about, or a minute, about the latter, okay? My responsibility, above all other things, before we get to student performance or anything in that domain, is the safety of children. And I assume some or all of you have children who've been in school, and if I were to ask you as a parent, what's the primary, primary expectation that you have for schools, it would be the safety of children. Safety, physical safety and emotional safety and other types, okay? And we've all experienced in the last year, since Columbine, since Newtown, since all the shootings, what we have to do in terms of the personal and emotional safety and physical safety of children. This is nowhere near that. I'm not trying to create an analogy between X number of trucks going down 33 and all of that, but I lived through those as a superintendent, and I can tell you, it was incumbent upon me to be sure that we had an appropriate response and did the best we could before and after the event to place safety first and foremost in the minds of parents, community, and of course, children. So I have that expectation of myself, the board has that expectation of me, and even more importantly, I have that expectation of each principal. When you're a principal working in the district where I've been superintendent, it is unequivocal that you run the school. It's your responsibility to be sure that what happens in and around that place in, on the campus, inside the classrooms, and when students come and go from that school, it's your responsibility. And in fact, state law mandates that we have safe places into which students come and when students leave, right? So when the bell rings to start, and the bell rings to finish, that, our job's not over. We have to be sure that we've done everything we can to ensure the safety of those students. So I hold every student responsible, every principal responsible for the safety of their children. And in that respect, I want to just tell you a little bit about Greg. So Greg has, I'm a short timer, eight years. Greg's been at Nordoff High School his whole career, 21 years, 13 as a teacher, three as an assistant principal, and five as principal. So his eight years as administrator, as an administrator coincided, has coincided with my eight years as superintendent. I know the standards to which he holds himself, I know the standards to which he holds his staff, and I know what he expects of student behavior, including driving. And we have a very challenging parking lot, okay? I'm not sure he'll go into that, but we do. Getting inside and outside of that parking lot is quite the chore. And so what he's gonna talk about is that, is what it's like to be a student or a parent trying to get into Nordoff, less so out, we'll talk about that a little bit too, but I can assure you as I finish, that there's no question in his mind, and I wanted to be sure there'd be no question in your mind, about the importance that we hold in terms of safety of students coming to and leaving the high school. Thanks.
Good morning. You my name, address?
Yes, sir.
Or my, Greg Bayless, 250 Francis Street, Ventura? So like Dr. Banksor said, my first among many roles is the safety of Nordoff students. And again, I'm not sure if there's anything I can add that has not already been said, just a different voice, a specific voice, that of a principal, again, having been there for 20 years and seeing how challenged our parking lot can be. So the reason why we're talking about morning arrival as opposed to including afternoon departure is that all of our students arrive at the same time. However, departures, because we have so many students involved in sports, extracurricular activities, they depart in a very dispersed pattern over the course of many afternoon and evening hours. So our parking lot is not nearly as challenged or as potentially dangerous entrances, exits in the afternoon as it is in the, in the morning. So this morning period of time, we have students coming on bikes, on foot, they're driving, teenage drivers, not always the most rational or well experienced and trained, and we have the majority of students coming in, in cars, turning left across southbound Highway 33 traffic. And I heard the good statistics presented earlier, I can offer not a quantifiable count, but certainly many near misses, many close calls, as we have pleased the parking lot every afternoon, particularly during the time I've been principal for the last eight years. And one other thing, I think that some of the pictures can show, if they're able to be called up, is that we have the earliest start time for any high school in the county. And particularly in the winter months, that presents a very low light environment where visibility can be quite poor. There's a few of those pictures that show that. And I assure you that those are not photographic tricks. Okay. Well, I think that, I think that this one will certainly do the trick. And this is, again, just right during the 7:30, 7:35 time period for arrival. Now, those two, all the pedestrians that cross coming from the more densely populated part of town are coming across two crosswalks. There is no traffic light, no control light on Highway 33 here. So all these factors, without trucks or additional variables, do create a potential for danger, and it's something that I have wrestled with, and I know my predecessors have wrestled with as well. So just briefly, I want, my presence here does give me the chance to thank the Mossler Quarry for their generosity over the years with material donations to Nordoff and their observance of some kind of a delayed start time. And again, I'm a little unclear about whether or not that was just graciously done by Mossler Quarry, if that was required. But I was able briefly during the intermission to contact a principal, retired principal, who actually, Leo Mulliter, who was apparently a planning commissioner as well for some time, new fact, I didn't know, but he, he spoke to the fact that perhaps the 8 to 9, 8 to 9 o'clock time period was originally written in because that's when Nordoff started at the time, in the 70s. That, we had a modular schedule, it was very different, and so there were, there were two different start times, one of which was around 8 o'clock, a second of which was around 8:30. So, and he is actually the one that ended that start time, and we've had the 7:35 first bell, 7:40 bell, 7:34, 7:40 start bell for a long period of time. So perhaps that is, that could shed light on that. So my request, I want to make sure that you know that I know nothing about the economics of rock quarry work, and I know that there's likely a cost and an inconvenience to a delayed start time, and I don't, I don't take that lightly by any stretch. But I think that if there's a delayed start time, that would be of great benefit for our students, our parents, during a very vulnerable, narrow window of time at the beginning of a day. And that, again, seems to me advisable and reasonable, so thank you, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Are there any questions? Go ahead, Ricky. Talk to me about crossing guards. Do they exist?
We don't have crossing guards, not the high school. I know they exist for elementary schools, but not for Nordoff High School, no.
Okay, there was some comment made earlier in reference in one of our exhibits that the local police department sheriff is often seen in that hour at Nordoff High School, is that accurate?
Well, it's difficult to, it's difficult to know what often means. We don't have a school resource officer. There was a time when we did have that, where there was a police car parked on campus for a long period of time, but that's not something that we have had for the past eight to 10 years. And so I can't say that I have seen a police car, sheriff's car, an Ojai police car parked out there with what I would call a degree of frequency, that I think that the word often indicates.
So it sounds like it's a catch as catch can if the, if the patrol officer might be available.
That's right, that's right.
Okay. Can you respond to a question about funding? Or is that a superintendent's question?
That may be a superintendent's question.
I'll try.
Thank you, I have no other questions.
Yeah. Yes.
Once again, your name.
Oh, Hank Banksor.
Thank you.
Yep.
You know, I have experience dealing with crossing guards. I was a police officer for 35 years here in this county.
Thank you.
Chief of Police in Moore Park, we're three of them. So I'm intimately familiar with trucks, truck traffic, intersecting highways within the city limits. And I also know that, that crossing guards are a great safety factor, either funded directly by the school district or in concert with the city and the school district. At specific locations, you don't have anybody at, no, at Nordoff High School apparently, and haven't had for a number of years?
Not since I've been there.
And what is, but you have them at other schools?
Elementary schools.
Are they funded or volunteers?
They're funded by us.
Okay. So I'm assuming that the issue at Nordoff High School is a funding issue as relates to a possible crossing guard?
It might be funding, it might be an assumption that when you're 14 years old, you're able to, you've done enough walking across streets that you can make better judgments on your own, 14 to 18 years old. My experience, I'm trying to think in a second now, I cannot think of a high school where I've been superintendent in that district where we had crossing guards. That's just my, it doesn't mean they don't exist, it's just in my five or six, seven, I guess, high schools, I haven't seen that, and I think it's, I think it's an age issue. And actually, we did have, we had a shared resource officer with the city for, in sort of 2010 to '12, and then you know what the economics were like in the state of California. We made severe cuts in teaching and every other component of the district, and that particular expenditure had to be set aside.
So you had a shared cost on...
Shared with city, city and, city, the city...
The school district had a shared cost on the SRO?
Yes.
School resource officer?
Yes.
Okay. And that hasn't been approached again?
No, we have, we have, and I think Greg is correct, I think your, your character's in catch as catch can is about right, we've evolved into a few hours a week where the police officer, we would be there with a car parked in the parking lot to get the students' attention, of we would call sort of peak hours of student involvement in not acting as we would want them to act, like spring break, or a week or two before the end of the school year, or right before winter break. They just tend to get a little goofy. So we have more SRO time, but it's, it is, it is dependent on the day and dependent on the availability of the police department, which Bill, as I recall, is a, is a grand total of three? Yeah, we have three total police officers in the, for the entire city. And actually, they're county, they're county officers, but they're assigned...
Two.
Okay, two. So, right. So it's a very, I'm sure compared to Moore Park, extremely limited.
So your final bell in the morning is what time?
Final bell in the morning is 7:40.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, I don't have no other questions. I don't have no other questions.
Go ahead, Dr. Mekser.
Hello, Mr. Bayless, how are you today?
Thank you.
Good. I do have a question for you, but I'm going to get to it in a little bit of a roundabout way. I, in fact, a very long time ago, was a high school student, and I attended a high school that was on a road where there was a lot of truck traffic. The school, through their driver's education program, educated me that trucks and other vehicles are dangerous and bigger than me. And so I had the responsibility, it was incumbent upon me, to be a safe driver and be aware of those particular situations that would be daily in my existence. So I was educated to understand that. I was also a parent, at one time, dropping off children at school. And again, the school made sure to educate me that I needed to be responsible and coexist on a busy street, because many of the schools my son attended were busy streets, to be aware of traffic, so on. And today, I'm actually a runner, and I run all the streets of Simi Valley and other cities when I run half marathons. And I'm instructed by the running groups I am involved in that it is incumbent upon me to be safe and coexist. Do you have an educational program in place, since you do have a fear of safety issues with the kids?
I'm not sure it would constitute a program, but certainly, we do our very best to educate parents at the beginning of each year. During our parent meetings, we talk about safest procedures for coming into the school, exiting the school. And we have tried to do some things with our parking lot, signage and painting, so that we restrict left turns out of the parking lot, cross Ojai, excuse me, Highway 33 into Miners Oaks. We're not always entirely successful at preventing that, and that's one of the things that really slows down traffic there. We do, we do our very best to talk to students, but does it constitute a program? I'm not sure it constitutes a program, but we do speak very directly with parents. Every year, we put it in our parent newsletter about how students can best be safe and where the best procedures for parking alongside the highway or entering the parking lot, if they have that choice to pick up their child parked along the highway or to enter into the school. So we do, we do our best.
And I would have to say it's paid off, because there haven't been any accidents. And I, Mr. Mossler, you have, what, three trucks that go by every 15 minutes?
Three trucks.
Okay. And so I'm trying to identify where you see those three trucks as a potential safety hazard to parents, students?
Well, I think that I see any increased traffic or any amount of traffic as a potential threat. And obviously, does, I know the numbers are small, but if there is a way to mitigate that with a short window of time where the trucks are not allowed, I think that that seems reasonable to me.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Mekser.
Excuse me. You say you have student drivers?
Yes.
Do you have a permitting process, or you just show up and park your car?
We don't have a parking permitting process. So our students are able to park anywhere on campus. In parking lot, there's specific senior parking. So no, we don't have, I know that some schools do have to buy permits, the seniors buy their parking space, but outside of that, there's no other permitting process for students.
And sir, compared to, again, those other high schools in which I've been involved, we have significantly more spaces to park compared to the number of student drivers than other places. So that having to limit the supply of being able to get into the parking lot is not even part of the equation.
Okay. So it sounds like you have no sanctioning capability for somebody you may observe being a careless or reckless driver?
Well, that's not true.
That's also a student.
No, we do have the ability, and it has happened, thankfully, very infrequently, where we've warned a student about unsafe driving, or they're parking erratically, or they've been, they've used their car in some dangerous fashion. Ghost driving, prom proposal, I remember one time. So we've told them that they're not allowed to park on campus. We give them a probation period where they are not allowed to park on campus. And we typically enforce that in conjunction with a parent meeting, and it's a temporary time period, and then they're welcomed back on campus.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Nora?
This has nothing to do with anything. I'm really interested in that ghost driving prom proposal.
It was fascinating, and I have read report, it was successful, and it was not, she said yes, and it was not, it didn't injure anyone. So it was a car slowly rolling, the driver gets out, that's called ghost driving, and then did something with the sign and said, will you go to prom?
Was this on school property?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question about just the general traffic. Clearly, it becomes congested there. Is there, have you done, is there ever a time where cars are turning left into that driveway and they are getting stuck in the intersection?
Yes.
And is that something that is incumbent upon the school to handle the flow of traffic coming in, or something that can be done on the streets for a light that is activated certain times of the day that only allow a certain number of cars? Again, these are not issues necessarily related to the case at hand, which really involves three trucks using the road. This is becoming a digression into the, the safety of just the use of that road and the limited access into and out of the, the school parking lot.
Well, I, I don't know if I'm authorized, but I have played traffic officer on various occasions, typically inside the parking lot, trying to get students to merge in civilized fashion into that one exit bottleneck there. Controlling what happens on the highway is, is not something that we have done. But I can tell you, since I am out there frequently, getting stuck, making a left turn, getting stuck in the middle of the highway, typically because the driver begins the left turn and then there's a pedestrian walking across that entry point, that happens at least several times every day, every morning.
I have a question, since we're going off base. How is it possible that a four-lane highway reduced to two by this proposed improvement is going to make things safer?
Well, let's, obviously, I'm not a traffic expert. My, my guess is that lane changing in order to avoid people who are stopped, for a pedestrian, and then the person behind that car that has stopped cannot see the pedestrian, and a quick lane change around, I think there are some safety issues that it would mitigate. It would slow traffic down, which could indeed be a benefit, but I think it would mitigate those concerns about pedestrians.
Have you ever thought about that?
I, I had, I remember. Have you considered going back to a staggered times, start time for the students, given the situation that you encounter daily?
No, we haven't considered a staggered start time. The reason that schools, and in the past, Nordhoff did a staggered start time, was because there was a module schedule, there was a block schedule, so you didn't go to every period, every single day. And so some students would have periods 1, 3, 5 on a Monday, other students would have periods 2, 4, 6. It was a bit of a logistics mess, and it really presents a certain kind of educational model that we are not embracing at this time. And the later you start, I know there's a lot of good research that talks about how students do not wake up at the same time that adults do, and that a later start is advisable. Problem is, that means that athletics are impacted, so students have more class to miss at the end of the day if, for athletics, and so they end up losing educational instructional minutes. So it's a zero-sum game.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The next speaker, please. Do we have anybody else?
That'll be it for as far as our formal presentation, but I think there's someone here who has a comment to make, but is not part of the appeal.
Bring him up. Please state your name and address, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Carol Holly, and I live in Ojai 10508, Sulphur Mountain Road. And I'm here as a former Ojai Unified School District employee, a graduate of Nordhoff High School. I have four children who have attended Nordhoff High School, and five grandchildren who will graduate from Nordhoff during the lifetime of this permit. Our oldest child was a senior at Nordhoff when a fellow student was struck and killed in the crosswalk directly in front of Nordhoff. One of the things that hasn't been talked about today is that Ojai Valley itself is an east-west facing valley, such that when the sun comes up and you have a full vision of that sun rising over the valley ends, it absolutely blinds you, and that is what caused this student accident. So Nordhoff starts at sunrise much of the year. And it is very, very difficult for trucks or any vehicle coming toward Nordhoff from the direction of the quarry to have clear visibility. So that, to me, the very size of a large truck, which limits visibility, when you have students on bicycles, walking across streets, parents pushing strollers coming in with students, all of these things I've personally witnessed, and I know the complexity of driving through that area, both in the morning and in the afternoon. I have, I have some issues with some of the things that staff has determined, so I want to go through those very quickly. Staff has made, given six reasons why they think that this is not necessary, that we shouldn't have safety restrictions for these large trucks in front of Nordhoff. Reason number one, there's no record of an accident involving a truck from the quarry in its history. My understanding of safety law is not that there has to be a showing of a lot of accidents and serious problems. I think all of us with common sense can understand that the principal and the superintendent, and myself as a parent, have seen accidents in that area and know that the potential is there every morning. Luckily, we're a small town. Luckily, it hasn't happened in the recent past. But that doesn't mean that it can't. Reason number two, the county cannot impose regulations on the use of a state highway. It doesn't need to. All you need to do is limit the time that the truck, a loaded truck, can leave the quarry. And as to that point, three trucks, we've heard that over and over today, but this is a 30-year permit, and you're permitting 20 trucks. So we don't know what 20, 30 will bring in terms of the way the truck operator is operating this quarry. It's doubtful it will be the same operator operating it today. So I think we have to look at this permit with some vision, is what, what are we looking at for the future? And you're permitting 20. That means there will, can be 20s. If you, if there are only three, permit three. Reason number three, I agree, citizens shouldn't have to tell the police that they're going to go do something legal. Reason number four, the county presumes that truck operation will drive in an, that truck operators will drive in an unsafe or illegal manner. I think it's just the opposite. From the beginning of this permit, there's been a condition in place that has said trucks should not go past schools during opening hours. That was the first iteration. I asked to read the original EIR, and the planner looked for it here on site, and then looked in archives and said, she can't find it. So I don't think we have the information about why there was a safety reason for making this restriction in the beginning. What we do know is that the Planning Commission put condition 40 into effect in the very first permit. And that condition said trucks should not go past schools during opening hours. So they recognized that this would be an issue that could be avoided with mitigations. Reason number six, and this is the last one. The mine operator provided the planning staff with some information regarding the number of loaded trucks that could leave the quarry and pass Nordhoff during opening hours. I think I've addressed that, you're permitting 20. Staff states that the change in the permit condition of held request is based upon the concept that student or other drivers are unsafe. To clarify, we aren't requesting a change in the permit condition. Staff made the changes by deleting the safety condition. We're simply asking that the safety mitigation measure regarding truck traffic remain in the permit conditions. So I urge you, our planning commissioners, to do what is in your power to continue to mitigate a long-recognized safety issue with regard to this permit. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mossler, rebuttal?
Could you put up the conceptual drawing of this whole modification of 33 up on the screen?
I am clerk.
The one from 33 and 150, the aerial?
His presentation.
They submitted it to the city. Couple of things I'd like to comment on. I made notes this time, so I will be correct. I went, every time I go by the high school in the morning between 7:00 and 8:00, there's a police officer, sheriff's officer, sitting in the parking lot, watching the school. Now, I don't go by there every day to see that, but I have yet to go by there and not see them there. So, week ago, I go down to the sheriff's station in Ojai, and I, there's secretary there, and I, there's secretary there, there are two other officers inside, plainclothes guys, and a third guy walking up. I ask them, is a police officer assigned to that parking lot between 7:00 and 8:00? And then, as most government entities will do, they won't give you a definitive answer, yes or no. It's dance around the subject. So then, after I'm trying to, I'm telling her why I'm concerned here, what's going on, I just want to know, I'd like to have a piece of paper that says, yes, there's a police officer, it's supposed to be there in the morning to watch traffic, or no, there isn't. So I wasn't really getting anywhere with that. And then, one of the other officers came up, and he was going to really tell me, we're not going to answer your question. You know, we have so many officers, they're not assigned to a specific spot, this, that, and the other. And I said, fine, I'm not going to get a piece of paper that says, yes, it is, no, it isn't. So then, I walked out, and I happened to look at the back of the building, there are at least six sheriff cars sitting back there. Now, I'm hearing from these people stating that there's only two police officers on duty in the city of Ojai at any time. I don't know. I'm not there, I don't really know. But I see four or five police cars in the parking lot right there, three officers and a secretary in the office. So what do I know? I break rocks for a living, I don't know. Uh, no, the other, the real photograph, that's the map. Okay. The, go, go once more over the entire area. One more. Well, that's back, okay, all right. Anyway, everybody can take a look at that drawing. That's a rendering, conceptual drawing of what these people want to do. Now, I am sitting back here, and I am listening. I'm a little bit confused, because what I'm hearing from the city is that when they do this, it's going to make it more unsafe because of my trucks. Now, I thought this was supposed to make it safer, because it's going to slow the trucks down. But I hear more confusion that the way, what I'm hearing is, doing all of this, it's going to be more unsafe. it's going to be more unsafe. So I'm a little confused on that. And then everybody is really concerned about the safety of kids. Well, I am too, you know? But if the city of Ojai already has this money set up and the superintendent of the school district and everybody's so worried about these kids, these so-called unsafe young drivers, as Shapiro put into his letter, then why are we doing, spending all this money to plant trees, put in curbs and gutters and all this stuff? Why don't we put in a red light? To me, the principal just said, well, you've got these kids that are trying to make an illegal left-hand turn and that's going to take and kill somebody. Well, let's put in a red light because a red light used to cost 50, 60,000 bucks, but I'm sure now it's probably 100 grand. And you put in a red light, you stop all the problems. Why can't they do that? Instead of planting all the trees, putting in bicycle, walkways and all of this stuff? Let's get down to making it safe for the kids. Put in a red light. Let's see. Those were the things that I was concerned about here. Let's get the truth. Is there a cop that's in that parking lot or isn't there a cop there? It's definite answer, yes or no? Is, you know, are there two police officers that work the entire Ojai Valley every day or is that a fallacy and there are more? And why do we want to spend all of this money for site improvements and whatever when these kids are getting run over and killed in the streets, when we could put a red light in and solve the problem? I hope, thank you.
Just a moment. Any questions? Mr.?
Yeah, let me go to your first point about seeing the police officers in the parking lot at the high school whenever you drive by.
Like I said, I do not go by there every day between seven or eight. Every time I've gone by there, between that timeline, more so from 7:30 to eight.
No, I understood.
There's a police officer parked in the parking lot facing right out to the street and he's highly visible from oncoming traffic on both sides. So I go down to the sheriff's station because I believe having a piece of paper, that is, that, that, that solves the problem. And a simple thing that I want to know, is there one there or isn't there one there? Now, the principal said, or he, he gave the impression, sometimes there are, sometimes there isn't. Now, that's not what I think, but that's what he thinks. Maybe he, he's there every day, he knows more than me, I don't know. But I, I go to the source, the sheriff's station, to find out and I can't get an answer.
Well, let me, let me give you some clarification since I have some experience. As I said earlier, I left the sheriff after 35 years as a chief deputy. One of my later assignments was overseeing police, sheriff's police services west of Keneo Gray, which included the cities of Camario, Fillmore, and Ojai, who were administered by sheriff's managers. And it relates to Ojai. I, I worked with my police manager and the city manager at that time, I don't remember if it was Bellknap or who it was, dealing with contracts, what the level of service is they want for that particular year because it can fluctuate year to year. But during that time, we also dealt with the remodel of the current police station, shared funding on that. The city contracts specifically for two patrol officers, they have two beat areas, that's 24-hour coverage, and, and they also have an investigator, half-time investigator or something, as well as, as, well as shared supervision. The sheriff's department coexist in the city police department with county patrol services, which encompass that whole valley. And so consequently, you may see half a dozen cars in the back of the police department. Whether they're all there or not, or on duty or not, you know, I couldn't speak to it, but certainly there's always two on the street, there should be on the street in the city of Ojai. Shift changes occur, there's overlapping shifts, generally it used to be a seven o'clock shift change from, from night shift to day shift. And I think they used to overlap an hour so that both cars didn't come on and off at the same time. And so if somebody is there in that area you're talking about, it's probably because they're waiting to go off shift or they're coming on shift, grabbing a cup of coffee, they notice there's, and the other part of it is, I used to, my managers and, and I would encourage them, but the managers would take it on themselves to encourage, encourage their patrol staff to, you know, go by the high school, check it out, because they know there's activity there, traffic activity. So that's why you're seeing it and that's why the city says, you know, they don't have anybody there. They don't. The city school just said they don't have anybody there. It's just a matter of workload on behalf of the sheriff or the police department there. And it's the same uniform, the only difference, distinction is notification on the car, one says Ojai Police Department somewhere, I believe on the back, maybe below on the door. But otherwise, they're all, they're all black and white patrol cars. So the city benefits from that in the fact that, that county staff works out of the same building in the city. And so from a visibility standpoint, the city benefits from having multiple cars seen in Ojai, in the Ojai Valley, because they come and go out of that station.
Okay, so.
And so, and so, you know, you have a situation that ties up your patrol cars, you'll have county cars diverted to assist the city with whatever's going on, be it an accident or whatever it might be. So that's why you see that. It's, it's, it's not the fact that there are people sitting around that could be out there and should be out there. Those people, if they're on duty, they're probably assigned to the county area for patrol services.
Okay, but clarification to me. At any one time, there's more than just two police officers, either city or sheriff. And I, I, you know, to me, a cop is a cop.
Yeah.
As a city, county, whatever, it makes no difference, a cop is a cop. There's only two in the entire Ojai Valley running around at any one time? Or are there more?
There's two in the city of Ojai running around at any one time. There are others running around.
Okay.
That's, you know, circum, encompass the whole valley, which may, which may or may not be in the city.
I.
At any given time.
And they could drive through the city too.
Exactly.
But then, then, you know, the guy that's sitting in the parking lot doing that time period, I've yet to see him having his cup of coffee. So again, I don't want to labor the issue or anything, but, you know, I felt I had to respond to this.
Sure.
With what I have seen and what I know and what I tried to take and do.
Right. You know, on your other questions, yeah, I'm just trying to clarify it for you. I wasn't trying to, you know, do anything else. The other question you asked about is, is, and I don't, about funding for a modification on 33 to limit the lanes through a grant and why they do it, and probably the reason they do it, safety issue obviously is part of it, but the fact that there are grant monies available.
Yes, yes.
And so all the city has to do is present a viable project, as they have, to see if they can get funding to do that. And beyond that, the traffic light situation is a Caltrans decision based on conditions on the road and traffic and whether there's a need. And it doesn't appear that, I mean, there are traffic lights at both ends, obviously, north and south of the high school. But beyond that, it would take probably a partnership or, or some, some motivation by the city to approach Caltrans and see if, if there is any way that can be done.
Well, and.
And that's, let's, you know, that's, that's, again, you get into the, to the dynamics of government and how slow it moves, et cetera, et cetera. And, and I'm, and I'm sure it would be a funding issue for the city of Ojai because Caltrans doesn't need a traffic light there, the city.
So obviously, if Caltrans doesn't see the need for traffic light there, they feel that the street is safe.
Correct. They're looking at the quantitative information that says it's a safe street.
And again, if we're all concerned about the well-being of all of these kids and everything and their parents and everybody, let's divert some of that money, put in a traffic light and that's, to me, that would solve the problem.
Seems logical.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It would seem more logical than planting more trees. But what are we going to do?
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Shapiro, or the designated speaker for the group. Can you pardon?
Thank you, Chair Anstott and fellow commissioners.
No, that's not what we said we were going to do. Go ahead.
Okay. There's really nothing to rebut per se, I just want to add that, sort of a reminder, you know, if we could, if we could enhance, enhance the safety of just one child, one child, or parent, faculty member, whatever, by virtue of the decision we make today, i- it's well worth, so, it's well worth doing. It's as simple as that. And as far, I just also want to point a clarification, although maybe it was already done, the Safe Streets project is, is not a speculative endeavor. The, the grant money has been approved, I think it has been received, actual bids are going out and it's through the planning, it's like everything else at any other project, it still has to go through appropriate planning stages, which it is. And as far as traffic lights versus, versus what the plan that you saw is, obviously working with the grantor and Caltrans, they determined that this plan that's now being, being worked on and will be constructed is, is, is an enhancement of safety. This is true. But it doesn't mean that because there's an enhancement of safety with this new plan, reducing four lanes to two and adding a bike lane and pedestrian lane plus flashing light crosswalks, doesn't mean that adding more trucks at exactly the same crunch time as kids arriving is going to be within that window of increased safety. You know, just, just that simple. And as you said earlier, I just want to reiterate, even though, and it's been alleged that I somehow pulled this out of a hat or something, I mean, again, the 2012 rec plan does state, quote, "Loaded trucks are prohibited from driving through the city of Ojai between the hours of 1:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. on weekdays, so this is not applicable when Nordoff High School is not in session." See condition 40 of CUP 34892. After conferencing with my colleagues here, given that the final bell is 7:40, there's no problem with compromising and making that change instead of 9:00 a.m. from 1:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. So we're moving up an hour when trucks could come through the city limits. And I think that's a great compromise. I think it's an ounce, it's still more than an ounce of caution that we'll need. And again, to remind you, this is a 30-year CUP. Congestion, enrollment spikes are definitely going to happen. There's no question that demographics point this out. Mr. Mosler, God willing, will, will live in his 90s and still be directing that Mosler, but I suspect, that, that quarry, but I suspect since we are similar age, he will sell that business. So we don't know now, as we're giving this 30-year CUP, what the business model of the new owner is going to be. We have no idea of, of, so we are, we are planning for the future, sort of covering our bases. And that's why we think it's totally prudent to say that no trucks could pass there until after 8:00 a.m. instead of my original desire of nine, as according to the CUP. So that, that would suffice my comments for today.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Shapiro?
Yeah, I do have one question.
Sure.
Sounds like you were intimately involved with this grant presentation in coordination with Caltrans.
Yeah, no, I, I wasn't, but I have, as an observer, I attended meetings, the Safe Streets, there is a Safe Streets committee on that answers to the city of Ojai City Council and I've, I've conferred with Greg Grant who got the grant.
That's fine. You're familiar with the grant proposal, obviously.
Yes, yes.
Does that include a traffic light where the left turn lane would, would be allowed into the high school?
No.
And if not, why not?
Yeah, I, I honestly don't know. It doesn't include it and I don't know the answer. It did include in the ground, you've probably seen them there, they're becoming more popular, these very bright flashing strobe lights in the ground, that a pedestrian can press a button to activate it when they're going across.
Right.
That I know is in several places, they're adding those.
That works for pedestrians, but not well for cars.
That's, that's true. I can't argue with you.
Is it something, is it something that the city would consider in a modification prior to the final plan, plan being approved?
I think.
To put in a left turn light there? If Caltrans would agree to it?
I think both Mayor Protem Wirick and myself, after hearing your comments and suggestions about this, I know that we're going to be asking that question today. And, and I, if you would like, I could get back to you to let you know what the answer and response was.
I think, I mean, it's, it's, in my mind, it's a logical question now that you presented that information. And you are taking a, a four-lane road and narrowing it down to two.
Correct.
In essence.
Correct. That is so. And that's because we're adding bike lanes and pedestrian lanes separate from one another, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Just a comment on that because I know school buses stop on that road. So you will have cars stopped waiting for school buses, which is a lot different, it just occurred to me that you're creating a traffic issue more than solving a traffic issue with that plan.
Then maybe I'm, I'm not the expert behind this, but I know that Caltrans is the sort of advisor-in-chief for the implementation of it and they've approved it. So I can't respond, although what you're saying makes sense. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro.
Thank you very much.
Staff closing arguments?
Yes, thank you, Chair Anstott. I want to start just by, by working my way down from things that I heard from speakers and, and for the Mayor Protem Wirick for the city of Ojai. Just want to assure him that there has been ongoing conversations with the city manager and, and large packets of material sent to the city on this project. And including an email that I had in exchange on December 13th that says to the city manager, per our conversation this morning, I had a lengthy conversation with him out here in this very building, I will send you the conditions of approval from 1981, which has the hours of trucking operation at 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the same as it was in another permit, which was recently approved, and the same that it was in 1995. So I was letting the city manager know that 7:00 a.m. start time has been there for 40 years. And then I went on to say, as we discussed, what was removed were the local limitations of the state highway, because I had a lengthy conversation with him back in December about which conditions were being removed, as well as allowing personnel to arrive at 6:30 a.m. and, and not 7:00 a.m. So we, I was just reiterating the conversation that I had with him. So there isn't any doubt that the city manager and I have had conversations about what was being removed in the permit. I heard Carol Holly say that, that she, she doesn't, she doesn't want a change in the permit. So I want to be clear on that because the change in the permit, the reason why the permit is being changed to begin with is the 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. time is ineffective for the purpose that perhaps it was there for it one day because the bell rings at 7:40. So if we make no change, the trucks, have they been going for 40 years between the hours of 7:00 and 8:00 without incident? That's, you know, that's what we would be changing. There is no reason, I would think, that the school district would agree to at an 8:00 to 9:00 limitation, which has been happening this, this whole time. So, you know, and there, there's been a lot of conversations with the planning commission, put it in at one time, therefore it was important and it must stay. Right? That's the exercise we go through as planners every time, planning commissioners, laws change, rules change, federal law, state law. We don't look at something that was 30 years ago and say, okay, let's just keep it all in. We look at every single condition to see, does it make sense, what changed? And we've gone through these conditions that were written in the 70s, 80s, and 90s where it said, a truck can turn left here and a truck can turn right here, and we've stripped those conditions out. So that's just a very routine things that happen. It's not a, anything nefarious that's happened. It happens in the public process and, and in the public realm. Construction starts early, right? And so limiting a construction site or a quarry to, to not start and open a gate at 8:00 a.m. is, is very detrimental to that business. They start early, you know, quarries start early, sand and gravel start early, the, the cement trucks start early, and that's for a reason, right? Construction starts early and that's, that's the way that always been. So, so limiting him by one hour, which may seem not a big deal, one hour, three trips, really has an impact on a business, especially some of- on a business, especially somebody's business that only has 20 trips. We're not talking about three trips out of 1,200 for SEMAX. We're talking about three trips, you know, out of 20 in, in a very big business hour. So, you know, I don't want that to go without saying. I would also say to, to Mr. Bayless and Mr. Bangster, I really appreciate you coming and participating in the public process. And I would say, when you say the safety of, of the children is the number one issue, I would completely agree. I have three children in the public school system, and, and if somebody told me, you know, there will be trucks rumbling by, right, I would, I would pay attention. As the planning director, I have another role. I have to pay attention to the facts. So when I hear safety, you know, isn't an analytical issue, it is an analytical issue, I have to look at the facts that I'm putting on the record. Because SEQA says, and that's what we're all here to talk about, the California Environmental Equality Act and how we're following that, it says, "Argument, speculation, unsubstantiated opinion or narrative or evidence that is clearly inaccurate or erroneous, or evidence that is not credible shall not constitute substantial evidence." So when the, when the county takes all of this time to look at the record and say, "The quarry's always been open from 7:00 to 8:00," there shouldn't be any question about that. The trucks have been rumbling through there since the 30s, but legally permitted through the processing since 1976. Those have been operating. So if you do the math on that, that's 40,000 trucks in that, in those hours without an accident. That is substantial evidence. You're putting evidence on the record that this quarry has operated during those times when there hasn't been an impact. The grounds of appeal saying, "We need to allow for inexperienced and newly licensed teenage drivers and their car-pulling parents," you know, "We need to allow for, there's protection," that's not, that's not substantial evidence. That's just saying, "There's new drivers, and we should be careful." We looked at being careful. There, there isn't anything on the record that's saying, "For this particular mining site, we should curtail their hours." There isn't any evidence to present that. So, so although I see as a parent, those, those very, you know, tug at your heartstring issues, I have to look at the facts on the record and present the facts because we're in a fact-based business in the planning department. And so that's, that's what we're presenting to the, to you. And I would say that, you know, you, this commission has struggled with that various issue recently, as did the, as did the board on Koenigstein Road, right? And Koenigstein Road is a, is a two-lane, pretty windy road where you still made the, the decision saying, "There isn't any evidence that's saying there will be an accident here." This is a, a four-lane road with all sorts of, you know, the, the best of the best of all of the traffic calming techniques that you can have with no accident. So I would say that, that, that would put the, the planning department in a pretty precarious position if we were to say, "With no evidence at all, we're going to limit or curtail hours of operation." As I said, that would, that would lead me to wonder what Villanova would say in every elementary school, or preschool, or church, all the way until, you know, when do you start, stop regulating, you know, when it, when it gets out to the 101? I mean, so that, you know, my role is to, to really provide some predictability in the process, and some predictability says you have to have substantial evidence. So that's, that's the truth that we hold here, and I think that that is what we presented to you in all of the, the facts that we were able to, to put together in this presentation.
Chair Anstott, members of the commission, I was just wondering if Chair Anstott remembered back in 1976, when he was here for the original decision. But I'd just like to make the point, and, and, you know, numbers, you know, are facts, and, and they're really not disputed. In the hour in question, 7:00 to 8:00 in the morning, since that condition was put in, it's been about 40 years. It was put in in 1976. And during that time, there's been 40 million vehicles past the high school. And in those 40 million vehicles, there were 40,000 trucks from the quarry, and no, and zero accidents. We, we can't get beyond, from a factual basis, that there's just no evidence for us to proceed to limit the traffic. So that would be it for me, unless you have some questions.
Any questions of staff? Hearing now, and I'm closing the public hearing. What's your pleasure? Debate, discussion, a motion? Nora?
Thank you very much for presenting your views and participating in this process. I can understand if you, if you felt that you understood what was being changed and that you were assured that there was no change except the time extension, and then these details, you know, became clearer to you. I can understand feeling, you know, some concern and some, you know, confusion, because I too, like my question stated earlier, what, wait, what are we talking about? When does schools start? When is the prohibition on, on traffic? And we've got it, you know, indisputably. Schools starts 7:40. There is no rational basis for saying that we're going to stop this business from opening until 8:00 o'clock. There's just, there's absolutely no connection in my mind. So I'm, I'm prepared to, to make a motion.
Before you do that, let's, is there any other discussion of significance?
I got, I got the same, same issues. You know, I, I come at this as a parent, as an administrator who had to deal with these issues in a municipal capacity, and sitting here. And, you know, there's an emotional side to it, obviously, and nobody's questioning the issue of trying to do anything that deals with jeopardizing public safety, or certainly the safety of children. I see the warrants or the benefits of, of, you know, this grant proposal, I suppose. It, it produce things up, and, and in theory, creates a safer situation, particularly for pedestrians. The city of Centera has just done the same thing, or about to do the same thing on the avenue, where they're, where they're modifying intersections and extending the curbs out to, to narrow the passage between the two, two directions of traffic, because of all the accidents, et cetera, they've had in the past. But at the end of the day, it's, and there's reasons why there aren't accidents there, you know, whether it's the fact that, that the police car is there, whether the fact that it's not there, but people know it tends to be there, whether it's the fact that the truck drivers are just trying to drive a little bit slower because of the traffic. I think it's all of those things. I'm troubled by the fact that, that this grant has apparently been submitted, is going to create a funnel of traffic, whereas right now you have some flow. And I would, I'm frankly surprised that there isn't any sort of flashing light or, or stop sign to allow left-hand turn in the median area if it's, that wasn't included as part of a grant proposal by the city. I assume it's the city that, that put it forward. Obviously, the grant hasn't been completed, hasn't been, technically hasn't, hasn't been rubber stamped as, as approved, but it is moving forward. And I would encourage the city to at least consider that possibility. If, if the issue everybody's hanging their hat on at this point is the traffic and the safety issue related to trucks, it's, trucks are just a small part of the issue. There's a lot of vehicles that go through that intersection during that window of time. It'll look great. The trees will be there. It'll be a median, you know, we'll have flashing, flashing lights across the pavement, the, the crosswalks, certainly that's, we have those in a number of places in this county. But the still, there's, there's still a root issue, and that's people, vehicles turning left into the parking lot that attempt to do it when the southbound traffic on 33 allows it. And then they have to hope that there isn't anybody obstructing the, the entrance, as our principal just told us. They would stop cars coming, coming in because somebody, a pedestrian or somebody's crossing on the sidewalk, trying to cross the driveway. Again, I'm just, that's my base of experience, and that's what I see. I, the only other issue I have on this thing is, I, I have a problem with a 30-year term on this CUP. I really do. There's history here, history we had to deal with a number of times. And for the most part, all of it, all of it has, as I recall, has primarily to do with, with traffic and, and trucks, you know, outside their operating window. There's some other issues, or at least one issue on, on the site itself that I can recall. But I, I just have a problem with the 30-year CUP here. I, I, there's things going on there in the, in the Ojai Valley, obviously, all the time. We've got the creek, the creek issue that is mitigated, apparently for now, to everybody's satisfaction. But I'm not sure that 30 years, I can, I can sign off on a 30-year CUP. I'd be more comfortable with 20-year CUP. Give the, give this commission the opportunity to reevaluate and reassess and amend if necessary, continue working conditions. That's where I'm at.
First of all, I would say it's commendable that there have been no accidents there. So some things are being handled very efficiently at, at that intersection. But it does seem that you're presenting a bigger issue of traffic and something that's addressed at the beginning and end of school day, any, at any school. And that's why there are the 25-mile-hour zones and the flashing lights and all the signage to, to try to mitigate any issues. But that being said, you know, there may be other ways that you can look at having pedestrian crosswalks in other areas or other issues, other dealing with, having the city talk to work out, again, the, a traffic signal or, or something that could be done at the city level and with the district. What's before us is whether there is any evidence that these three trucks, the, the trucks that are coming from the quarry during that time of day, which have been, has been going on that time of day for many years, and we have no evidence that there is, that, that has caused any problems. They're not a hazard. They, there's no evidence that they're driving unsafely. And I agree that changing the hours of operation would, would be a hardship for the applicant. And since there is no evidence to, to find that we should take such action, I don't believe that, that we should. As long, as far as the 30-year, that's why I asked the question earlier, between 20 years and 30 years, and since we have approved other mining projects for 30 years, and there aren't major, or there aren't any outstanding issues with this quarry, I would propose that we grant the, the 30-year CUP and the, and those staff recommendations. Does that motion?
I won't reiterate what's already been said. The fact of the matter is, as stark as it may be to the appellant's, is there is no rational basis to impose the requirements that you suggest to impose. The county has a right and the obligation to remove from conditional use permits, conditions that are either no longer applicable or no longer legal. They've done it in this case. There's no evidentiary support regarding returning accident, or concerning accidents. And I, I think that the burden of proof has not been met, and we cannot, without some rational basis, impose conditions on Mr. Mosler's business. End of story for me. Health and safety of children always at issue, but there must be some rational basis to impose conditions. Someone want to make a motion?
I move we accept staff recommendations and grant the modified CUP.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded.
May I make a comment?
Beg your pardon?
May I make a comment? I'm gonna, I'm gonna oppose, but only on the issue of the term of the CUP. I, I agree with the commission as far as the safety issue and, and the inability or, no need to, to put restrictions on the operator, given the past historical record of, of traffic there. My opposition would be based just strictly on the length of the CUP.
All right. Duly noted. Can we vote? Okay. Mr. Mosler, congratulations. You have a CUP.
Thank you.
Kim, do you have time to, or do you need to go?
I don't have anything for you, unless you have something for me.
Anything? No? With that, then the meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk? That'd be you.